Again, yeah, I want to thank everyone from the town, all the residents for attending. It's definitely not easy to attend remotely like this. And I guess before we start the meeting, I also want to acknowledge that I was definitely sad to see that Jim Dunley didn't get reappointed. He definitely was a great, strong voice on the board, great resident of Bellingham, and I'll definitely miss his perspective and his opinion. So I just wanted to acknowledge his...I believe he was on the board for about nine years. Is that right, Jim?
Yeah, at least, at least nine years.
So, and I mean, he was also, I remember he interviewed me when I first kind of applied for the position of alternate, so I'm sure many of the other board members know him better than I do, and I always learned a lot from him and always looked up and tried to live up to the standards that he and a lot of the other current and former members set for the board. So he'll be missed, but I guess with that, I also wanted to welcome the new member, newest member of the board, Ryan, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yeah, Ryan, that's, thank you.
That's right, yeah, so I guess if you wouldn't mind if you'd just like to say hello and a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Schumus. I am a civil engineer, professional engineer. I work geotechnical engineering mainly. I work on all types of bridges, Navy shipyards, buildings, and so forth. I specialize in instrumentation, deep foundation testing, and I've been a civil engineer for almost eight and a half years now. I've been professional engineer for a year and a half, and I'm really excited to be a member of the zoning board, and I hope I can contribute as much, if not more, than Jim Dunley. I know it's a big shoes to fill, and no, I look forward to seeing how I can help.
Well, I'd like to welcome you as well, Ryan. Thank you for stepping up as well. And as far as Jim is concerned, he served the board well, and I want to thank Jim for his service and all the number of years he was with us. So welcome, Ryan. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, we're happy to have you here. So I guess with that said, I'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is a continuation of a public hearing for a variance. And I believe, Jim, if you could fill us in, it appears they have withdrawn their calls?
That's correct, yeah. You have in your package an email that Laura forwarded over to you all from Susan, who has requested that the board accept their withdrawal of the variance request. So we just need a formal motion to accept that withdrawal.
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is continuation for a comprehensive permit extension follow-up for Lakeview Estates. As I've done previously, I'm going to recuse myself being a direct abuser to the project. And I believe Brian Salisbury will be filling in for Jim Dunley if the board thinks that makes sense.
I have no problems.
Yes. Okay, the floor is yours, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Jim, you want to bring us up to speed?
Yeah, sure. So before I do that, I see a lot of people on the line here, so that's excellent. I just want to remind people that despite, even though we're online here on a Zoom conference virtual meeting, we're still gonna, the board's still gonna act as if we are, you know, live in person here. So the board will have an opportunity to speak, they'll hear from the applicant, and then, as I know this board, the board will give ample time for the public to comment and provide input. So please wait till that appropriate time for the board to call on the public. When they do, if you could either, in the chat box, you can raise your hand, and I can call on you and direct the chairman that there is someone with a comment. You can also make a comment in the chat box, either that comment itself or that you have a comment, and I'll be watching that and let the chairman know. And also, you know, you guys are live, so if you wave your hand, I can see you. So please don't hesitate once that time comes. In terms of updates, so the last we left it, there was, you know, it was an ongoing construction site. Phase one is moving along. They have several building permits out now along Candlelight Lane, the Loop Road there, where they're actively working on those single-family homes. In addition, they have the phase two, which is north of this site of the phase one where Candlelight is, along Breon, which is kind of a wide-open area right now. There's a lot of stockpiling material. You guys are familiar with the site. There was material being stored. They have begun to move it away from the public right away. They do have the dust control fencing up. We have had several conversations with the developer about dust control, and obviously, as I think you're gonna hear from several residents tonight, Sunday night was a storm that impacted the residents quite dramatically, in my opinion, not only on Silver Lake, not only at the lake, but also along Breon with a lot of mud. We were out there Monday morning getting cleaned up. We spoke with the general contractor, Alex, who I believe is online, and I'm sure he'll be able to talk to this more. But they have, they did clean up on Monday morning, and very likely some on Sunday night, and have, at my request, and I believe the site inspector's request, begun to stabilize phase two in the open area that's been heavily exposed with hydroseed. We drove by again Tuesday and Wednesday, and again today, just to confirm that that's still the case. But it is progressing. Unfortunately, there was that large storm Sunday night that I'm sure I won't do justice. I'll let the rest discuss.
All right, thank you, Jim. Angela, do you want to provide us with an update from your point of view?
Yeah, so I did submit some materials to Jim this afternoon. I know it was kind of late, but the storm was Sunday, so we spent most of the week cleaning up, identifying the cause of the problems, the cause of the flooding, and plan for remediation. So I will let our engineers speak to the causes and also what we are going to do going forward to remedy it so it doesn't happen again.
All right. Angela, is that Liz or Bob?
Yeah, Liz or Bob could speak to the cause for the, at least the flooding on Silver Lake Road was identified.
So on Monday morning, we were notified by Fafford. Obviously, I live in the area, so I knew there was heavy storms, but Wellington of Fafford went to the site during the storm and took some photographs and some video and sent that over to us. We reviewed it on Monday, reached out to Don DiMartino because he keeps track of the rainfall amounts, and he, we contacted him to find out if, how much rain, and also if there was flooding in other areas of town. He indicated there was about four inches of rain in 90 minutes, and that there was, his words, flash flooding in the typical locations around town. I just want to have my notes here. So the, so just, this is an overview of, I don't know if you guys did get the letter, but I'll just kind of go over it quickly. So stormwater design requires evaluation and mitigation of developments for four different level of storm events. And that's where typically the people throw around the 100-year storm. That's the most severe of the four storms that we typically design around. And despite the fact that the overall rainfall on, from the 628 storm, was approximately half of what the volume of water that a 100-year storm produces, the peak flow, because there was so much rain in such a short period of time, the peak flow was, we're estimating at a minimum double what would be experienced during a 100-year storm. And that peak flow is what causes the flooding. So basically, our analysis is that the way that the stormwater design is done, the, it doesn't prevent all flooding. And due to the intensity of the storm on Sunday, we wouldn't have expected there to be no flooding in the area. In particular, Silver Lake Road has historical flooding problems. That was part of the reason that the town went forward and made some improvements to the stormwater, adding some stormwater structures in Silver Lake Road, because as far as I know, there were none previously. So it's not unusual, and we would have expected to see flooding in that area. The stormwater design for a new site has a higher level of expectation. So what we, because GNH also designed the stormwater for the town. But the, when we do the design for a new site, we can change the constraints of the design in order to meet the stormwater requirements. Whereas for Silver Lake Road, which is an existing road with existing homes and existing topographic constraints, we can only design the stormwater to meet the regulations to the greatest extent practical. So the stormwater for Silver Lake Road is really designed to provide the, or there's only enough, there's only enough room there for us to design the stormwater structures to better the smaller storms. Once you get into the heavier storms, there's just simply not enough space for us to fix the flooding from the larger storms, which is actually what led us to, initially, when we designed the stormwater for the town, we had the structure down by the particle separator structure, down by Basin C at Lakeview, tied directly into the basin itself. That was something that, you know, Fafford didn't need to let us do, but we worked with them because we felt that that way we would be able to provide some additional mitigation in those heavier storms.
Brian, real quick, Liz, I just don't want to lose this one point, if I may. You mentioned, you know, to the maximum extent practical, and I get that, and you don't have enough space to incorporate for heavier rainfall, but you do own about 150 acres that directly above this property? So, I mean, it's the same ownership. I would imagine you have ample space to extend that basin, right?
So it's, that's, there's a difference between the basin, Basin C, which is the basin designed for Lakeview Estates, that is adequately designed for the development. The area that we, and if it wasn't, we would have had to shrink down the development in order to make the basin bigger.
Not necessarily. I mean, I mean, in 2010, when it was permitted, it was permitted through GNH without any real peer review on this end. It's, I'm sure it's our fault for not really vetting GNH's work, I don't think we'll ever do that again, but, but, I mean, we, there's other standards, and though we never got the test pits in the center of the basin, so we're assuming more infiltration, there's several variables in place here. I'm just saying, moving forward, it looks like we need to capture more water, and I think it would be great, and again, Liz, I'm not trying to argue with that, I'm just saying, I think we need to work together to try and figure out a better strategy, because it's clearly not working.
I don't disagree that it's not working, but what, my point is that there's, there's two separate systems going on here. There's the systems that are designed for Fafford's site, and then there's the town's drainage system. The town's drainage system is the one that we believe was unable to, as designed, was unable to handle that storm.
Right, and I get that. I'm pointing out to the fact that, one, you designed that as well, but also the rain that goes on to Silver Lake Road is not exclusively the town's stormwater. This is running from Candlelight Lane itself, as well as your temporary, it is, I'm there, let us say. You have double catch basins upgrading. You don't have a single basin at the bottom of that road. Okay, so you have impervious surface going on to Silver Lake Road?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so that water is going into our catch basin that is going eventually over to the L fall that you're saying is not functioning properly. In addition, your temporary road that you have there, that I note in your memo that I was able to get through about an hour ago before, you say that it's remaining. However, I watch it, we have videos, I watched, but I also watched it during the storm. It's clearly running off onto Silver Lake Road and going down to our catch basin. I mean, this is just obvious stuff here. And again, we're not trying, I'm trying to get to the next point here.
You are trying to argue.
Okay, well, I'm just stating facts, is what I'm saying, Liz.
Yeah, so the facts are, we are allowed by stormwater design to have some flow going from the site to Silver Lake Road. That's, that's part of a proper design. So if there is, that's why the catch basins are up there, otherwise, they would have had it been further down.
If we had a better designer, I think it would have been further down. I'm just, this is just going on and on so too long with you guys, Liz. I'm sorry, I don't mean to take up the board's time, continue on.
Well, if you have no, if the board isn't going to listen to, or believe, or really care what I have to say, then I'm not sure that it's worth anybody's time for me to provide what I think is the case. What we'd like to do moving forward is completely separate the town's drainage from Fafford's drainage, so that it is clearer than clear that the, that Fafford, that the drainage system for Fafford is not what's causing that flooding in Silver Lake Road. And yes, we designed the, we designed the stormwater for the town in Silver Lake Road, but as I said, there's, there's different allowances when you're doing something, when you're designing stormwater for a pre-existing, for a pre-existing area. And you, it's just not, if Fafford wanted to donate land to allow the town to build a large detention basin, then yes, absolutely, that's the way that Fafford could help with the flooding on Silver Lake Road. But we'd like to make those, we'd like to make the changes to the basin. We're gonna review it with DEP and the Conservation Commission. The Mass DEP was out on the site just the week before the storm, and they did not see any issue with the functioning of the basin. There were issues at a previous storm. We made, there, part of it was the way that the town system was tied in, so we changed that. We're gonna change that further so that they're completely separated. And, you know, I can understand everybody's frustration, and I can understand why our design is being questioned, but there's more, there's more, there are more factors to it than just our design. There's, there's our design, and it does get peer reviewed at DEP, no matter what, there's some review there. I'm not sure what other review might have taken place, because that was well before my involvement, but it's not like, it's just a blind eye. Plus, we've had other people look at it. There's, the problem is not in the design, and the, and we made significant changes after the last issue, cleaned up some of the construction practices that were causing part of the problem, took out the drainage from the, from the town, put most of the way, and now we were, we believe that the basin acted exactly how it was supposed to. If anything, I'm surprised that the basin did not overflow at the emergency spillway, which is what I would have expected to happen in that level of storm. So if, and if that had happened, that would have added flooding to the street, but in a designed way. So Fafford is not only going to remove the, remove the town's connection, drainage system connection to the main system and redirect that, but they're also going to make improvements, with DEP's approval, of course, further improvements to make the design or the final construction of the basin even better than is required by the regulations. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Liz, do you mind if I just butt in real quick? I just want to say that the amount of rainfall we got, it was almost like hurricane-level rainfall for that amount of rain in that short of a time, which, for an area that has historically been a problem, is, we're gonna see problems. So what we, well, yeah, what our proposal is, is basically, we're gonna, and the problem, we think, is that we're sharing that catch basin shares a manhole with our Basin C, and that the amount of water flowing in there, it just, it couldn't flow through. So if we can separate them so that they both blow up that headwall, separate pipes, we think that'll help alleviate the situation. But it, you don't, you don't design a system for a tremendous amount of rainfall like that. That is, it's just not a normal rainstorm. It was almost a supercell, you know? Like, the amount of rain in that short period, it's, it's really not normal. And the other thunderstorms we've got later in the week, I was driving down, checking, making sure everything was working. Everything works within the design, but when you have extreme conditions like we had that Sunday, it just got overwhelmed. So if we can separate, instead of all flowing to one manhole, then flowing out that headwall and just the street, Silver Lake has its own pipe going out that headwall, and the basin has its own pipe, and I think that'll really help.
It'll help, honestly, I don't think it's gonna help, I don't think it would have made much of a difference, if any, to what happened that day. It's just that it would have been easier to, to prove that it wasn't, it wasn't Fafford's site that caused the flooding, that's all. The way that it's configured right now, there's no way for me to definitively say that it didn't contribute, but if, once we separate it, I will absolutely be able to tell whether it's the town's drainage or not. The town's drainage system on Silver Lake Road is not designed for even a 100-year storm.
So Liz, so thank you for coming out and explaining this to us, and I know that you're, to some extent, sheep to the slaughter in coming into an unfriendly situation where there's a lot of questions about design and all of that. So I appreciate you coming here and helping to explain that to us. The issue, however, is, is that this has been an ongoing problem for, ever since this project has gone in, and that, and it's always been one issue after another, and it's always, well, it's not our fault, but we're gonna make these corrections, and those corrections are piecemeal, and then there are other corrections, and it sounds like there's gonna be further corrections made. And it's just, at some point, you have to stop and say, well, what's going on here? And are we, are we looking simply to avoid liability? Are we looking to solve the problem? And it really troubles me to hear that, the proposal that you're suggesting, the corrections, corrections, and I say that with quotes, that you're proposing to be made to the system is simply to prove or disprove liability on the part of Fafford, and it doesn't offer any contributions. And it's particularly troubling that your company, I'm not gonna blame you, but your company has designed both systems, knowing that the, that particular area is prone, I'll take your word for it, that it was prone to this kind of flooding prior to the development, although we've heard testimony from the public in the past that they've never had problems, they have now have flooding in their basements, and I suspect that we'll hear that tonight. But knowing that the, that that area was, at least theoretically, prone to this kind of thing.
It wasn't prone to that kind of flooding.
Well, let me finish, Liz.
I'm just saying, that kind of flooding that we saw the other night.
Liz, let me, let me finish. Where you know it's, it's at a heightened risk for some sort of flooding, and then it's been more than one meeting where we've had an engineer come and say, you know, we designed this for a 100-year storm, but that storm last week, boy, that was a lot of rain. It just begs the question, are we looking in the right direction? And from your analysis, what needs to be done? I don't, I'm not interested in about who's at fault, and, but what, what would you do if you had a magic wand to fix this problem?
So that's, that's exactly what I did propose there. I wasn't separating the two systems simply to prove that one person's, and like I said, we designed them both, so it's not, I guess, we're at fault either way, and especially in your eyes, as a collective group. But what, I do not believe, based on our analysis, and we've talked about this with several engineers in my office over the last week, we're potentially going to reach out to another engineer to have them review our work, because it's troubling to us that it's been piecemeal as well. But we haven't seen, what I think needs to get done is, I think it needs to be separated because it, I'm, because if, because it's not gonna hurt. I guess that's, that's why I want to separate them, because I don't believe that the system, the stormwater system for Fafford, for Fafford's site mishandled stormwater really in any way. We've, we worked on improvements to the swale at the outlet, and that function- We've, we worked on improvements to the swale at the outlet and that functioned much better than it has in the past. So we want to take, basically the, the manhole where they come together, there was so much water coming out of the pipe from the basin that the water from Silver Lake Road in the, in the town's drainage system couldn't get its way into the, into the manhole to, to get out to the head wall. So potentially, that was a part of the reason that there was some flooding in, in Silver Lake Road because if the, if the stormwater system in Silver Lake Road couldn't discharge, then it was causing a backup. So that, that's the intention of splitting the two is so that, so that the, the basin outflow doesn't block the outflow from Silver Lake Road. My professional opinion is that the, there's too much water getting to Silver Lake Road to get into and through the drainage system in, in order to prevent the flooding to begin with.
So what do we do to fix that?
There, you, you can't, well, I shouldn't say you can't. The, the, the only way to prevent flooding is to have an area of storage. So the town's drainage system was designed within the right-of-way of Silver Lake Road because there is no other available area for me to create a basin. Which is why initially we tied the, the town's system into the basin. Because we were, we wanted to use the, the volume of the basin to try and help the, the, the town system. So without, you know, without an area to, to create a basin for the water during a flash flood situation, there, there isn't a way to fix that type of flooding in, in Silver Lake Road that I'm aware of.
So if the, if the volume of water coming off of the, the Fafford property is, in this particular instance, so fast and so voluminous that it obstructs the town's system from emptying out, shouldn't that have been sort of part of the Fafford system that all this volume of water is flowing to this one particular spot? Or is, so it, to me, it's like you can pick and choose which who's, who's at fault. The, the water stops it and it backs up or there's nowhere for it to go.
Well, and, and it's, it's just my professional opinion at this point, but I don't think that was what actually caused the problem. I think that the system in Silver Lake Road just can't handle the water. There's no place to store the water. So it stores up on the road. Now, when we separate these two systems and, and the next time we get a, a storm, it will, it'll identify whether or not it was the Lakeview stormwater stopping the town's drainage from, from working or if it's just that the stormwater for, for the town can't handle a storm of that intensity.
So, but I'm, so what I'm concerned about that is, and I appreciate that that's an effort to, to figure out what's going on, is the, but we're, we're experimenting with flooding people's basements and flooding roads and putting people out and hoping for the best. To me, that's not, that's, you're tinkering with people's lives to see what's going on.
Yeah, that's not at all. We're, we, no. We, we have, we're not tinkering with it. We're, I'm, I, I under, I don't have the, I don't have, first of all, I haven't had the time since the storm and I don't have enough data and stuff to be able to do calculations to prove my hypothesis. But we've, we did what we felt was the most responsible design. Not, in, in no way do I, do we ever design something and say, oh, it's all right if those basements flood or, oh, they'll have a foot of water, it'll go away. That's just not, that's, it's utterly ridiculous to think that we would do that. Under no circumstance do, do we design something and, and think that it's going to create more flooding. We design, we design based on the, the regulations. At a minimum, we design based on the regulations. And at this point, all I can, all I can do is, is make these changes that I think are either going to show that, that this is, this is just a, that this flooding was because of the intensity of the storm or that, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
I just want to say that like, this isn't an isolated incident to Silver Lake Road. We got four inches in 90 minutes. That's an unprecedented, like very rare storm. And if you watch the news, you watch other, other storm drainage systems around Massachusetts failed. Places were flooded. There, it was just overwhelmed by the volume of this, this storm coming through. Every other rainstorm we've had since before the last Sunday, it, it has worked. And so like, the, the design.
The last, the last time that there was, the last, I, I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting, so I, I can't say what was. I, I don't know what was spoken about the last time that, that we had basically a failure over at the basin. But the last, but I've looked at it, I've looked at what happened and we reviewed the construct. There were, there were, I, the last time it failed, I do not believe it was either solely because of the amount of rain or certainly not primarily because of the amount of rain. There were, there, Fafford was attempting to keep sediment out of Silver Lake Road and so they did, they took measures inside the basin that prevented the basin from working correctly. They shouldn't have done it without consulting us. They were doing it with the best of intentions. But that, though, the, the, basically the outlet was blocked and the water couldn't get out the last time. So that's why there was a failure the last time. It had nothing to do with the design. It wasn't functioning as designed.
And then we joined, we met with Don DiMartino and we made that catch basin in the street and we shared the manhole. And we think it's just the volume of water from sharing the basin manhole and the street manhole that caused the flooding. So if we can separate them.
Yeah, I, I disagree with what you're saying, Alex. I'm sorry. And I, I think separate, we don't, that, that is a potential, I, I do not believe that the sharing of that manhole was what caused the flooding. And I can't, I can't prove that. But I, based on my engineering knowledge and experience, that is not what caused the flooding. So I do not believe, at this moment in time, I do not believe that it was an improper design to share that manhole. However, I'm not vain enough to think that I couldn't be wrong, which is why it needs to be separated so that we can make sure that it's not. And, and I have thoroughly looked at this to, to make sure that I believe we're not going to create an additional, additional problem by trying to fix this problem. So the last time when the basin failed, primarily because the outlet was blocked, we took the town's system out of the basin because we were concerned that there was, that the town system was adding too much water to, that that was one of the causes, that, that the town system was adding too much water to the basin and that was part of the reason that the basin failed. So that's why it got redirected to that manhole. In hindsight, I suppose we should have just not connected them both to the same manhole. But again, I, it, I just, I don't believe that it's accurate to say that the combination of the manhole was the problem. However, separating them, I think is a valid solution that is not going to cause any further harm. It can only potentially provide some relief.
Liz, let's say that you lived in this area, that you lived right near where this is all happening. What would you want done?
I, I, exactly what we're proposing at the, I, at, what I'm proposing is that we, is that we separate the two systems and, and Howard Fafford has offered to and, 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 and I think it's unnecessary, but I suppose if I were living in, in that neighborhood, I would probably be looking for it. But he's offered to put in an additional pipe from the basin to the, to the swale. So that, and, and really the only thing that will do, the way we haven't, have it designed, the only thing it would do is potentially slow down some of the outletting water at the, at the swale, which has been a continuing concern for the Conservation Commission. So that, that I'm, I'm certain that that's something that they'll be happy about. But I honestly, I, I, I wasn't there in person, but based on the video, I wasn't, I, I was impressed at, I, I thought the swale itself worked very well, which we've made improvements over the, you know, I've been involved in the improvements being made to the swale because the Conservation Commission, that was there and that's who I've been going in front of mostly. That was one of their major concerns. So this is the, this is definitely the next step that I would like to see happen. And if I lived in any of those houses, I, that's, that's what I would be asking you to have the, and the engineer or the contractor do.
And then what, what's after that? Then we say, one of the systems needs to be repaired, needs to be fixed, as I understand it.
I, I, I disagree. So the, the, I don't believe that the, I, well, I, not that I don't believe the, the, the stormwater system for the town is, is not, it's an improvement over having no stormwater management. But you, but you can't fix, I, I, you can't fix those, and you can't fix the stormwater from those intense storms unless you have additional land someplace.
Isn't there, like to Jim's point, there's additional land. There's a whole lot next to this outlet structure, right?
Yep.
There's additional space.
That's owned by Faff, that's owned by, that's owned by Fafford.
Correct. Exactly. So there's the rub, right? So I don't get it. I just don't understand that we have failing systems, we have people pointing fingers at each other. It's unacceptable and it's not a priority to, it doesn't seem to be a priority to anybody. It's just more or less, we'll come back here and we'll say it's everybody else's fault.
No, it absolutely is a priority. What she's saying is that this storm, and we all watched the news and we all saw the flooding all over this part of Massachusetts, that even if the, the stormwater system, even if this change had been done last summer when the basin failed and the pipes had been separated, even if the, the stormwater system could handle over, well over a 100-year storm, this flooding probably or more than likely still would have occurred with the amount of rainfall that we had in such a short period of time after a long period of drought, no less. This, this flooding was, I don't want to say inevitable anywhere, but this is not a Silver Lake Road specific problem or a Fafford specific problem. This was a widespread problem.
And there was flash flooding in other areas in the town. DiMartino, Don DiMartino reported there was flash flooding in other areas in town.
I, and I, and if this was the first time that we've been having problems with this, if this is the first time that this system has failed, then, then I could understand that. But this is an ongoing problem. And how, let me, no, let me ask you, how many times is a brand-new system that's not even fully up and running yet or a development that's halfway built fail? How many times does a brand-new system fail?
It didn't fail.
Okay, well, all right.
So Brian, so it sounds like they have some options that they're looking at. But before we, we go on to the next one, there is Phase Two and I'm sure obviously some time for the public, that also has a, you know, significant issues that we need to address tonight as well.
That, and that was a?
That is on BRION. So that is where the front-facing, I, I know Alex has been addressing this, maybe he can speak to it, but you know, this was, one, it was the, while we were in the drought, as Angela mentioned, you know, there's a lot of dust control issues. They do have a water wagon on site. I did talk to Alex about increasing that water usage. I know DEP reached out to me directly, asking for us to work with the contractor to get more water usage to control that dust. But then sure enough, as soon as that drought ended, you know, this, this storm happened and we had a deluge of mud come down onto BRION and around the bend there. So it was, it was a mud road for quite some time, you know. They, they were out certainly the next morning, but I don't know if Alex wants to touch on what they're doing to address that.
Yeah, so over, since that storm, we actually sprayed hydroseed over the majority of that open space there to try to stabilize it, get some growth, some grass. We put curl, we put waddles all around everywhere we loomed. We dressed up everything, put berms at the areas where the water blew out. And also this Monday morning, we started cleaning the street and trying to get everything back to the way it was before as best we could. So yeah, we have stabilized the majority of that open space. As of, it's, as of yesterday, it's, it's been sprayed. And we put erosion control measures around everything. So we'll continue to spray the water and we'll get, we'll get some growth and that, that will definitely help just stabilize any mud, so anything that could wash out. And then the areas that are just gravel, we, we did put up berms to prevent water flowing down into that street again. And also put some check dams to divert the water towards some of our basins that we have in that area so that we don't get the volume flowing towards the, the areas where people live. So as soon as that happened, we, we jumped right on it. And I don't know if anyone has seen, but we've been sweeping every day. We swept it today, yesterday, Monday, Tuesday. So we're doing everything we can to remediate that situation.
I appreciate that, Alex. Alex, why, why weren't those corrective actions taken in advance of, of what, with the rainfall?
Well, it, it was just the, the volume of rain we got, it just overwhelmed. We, we did have check dams in place. We did have waddles in place. The, just the amount of water it built up and it just breached over our berms. It was just so much. It was just so much all at once that it was working before, but uh it yeah, it just overflowed.
We have other active construction sites in town and they don't have these kinds of problems. I don't understand. It it's always a reaction. It's never proactive. It's never, we had no issues this month. It's always something new. And it's troubling. It's continuing to be troubling. I don't know why we continue to extend this permit because it it's just a detriment to the poor people that live next to this town. It really is. It's a shame. It's a shame. And it's considering it's a shame. Jim, what what do we need to do?
Uh well, I think uh I think you've heard from the the applicant, uh you know, perhaps if you want to give an opportunity for some of the public to uh to offer their their comments, Brian?
Sure. So let me start with other board members. I've been hugging the microphone. Um does anyone else want to comment or ask questions?
I want, Brian, if I may, uh Liz was talking about that the uh the basin was designed for 100-year storm, but this one was only a 50-year storm and it still overflowed. So uh maybe I misunderstood. You want to re-explain that to me again, Liz?
Yeah, so uh it's not that there's there's many components to uh what defines a storm event. It is pri- it's a graph and the graph uh includes the volume of a volume of water over a period of time. So it's it's a flow rate. Um so the fact that it it's not that this was a 50-year storm because of it it had the same volume of water for a 50-year storm, plus or minus. Um but a 50-year storm is that is four inches of water over a 24-hour period. This was four inches of water in a 90-minute period. So it's in it's in a it's a very low estimate for me to say that the flow, the amount of water getting to this to the um to Silver Lake Road or to the basin was more than twice what you would see during the peak of a 100-year storm. It was probably quadruple or even more than what you would see in that peak time period. So it's that this that's why, you know, these the storm events are um are confusing for 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 everybody because what first of all, 100-year storm isn't a storm that's supposed to happen once every 100 years. It it's a it's a misnomer of that. Uh and there are many factors um into many factors that I'm not even aware of beyond what I'm aware of.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is is 100-year storm, uh that would be the worst storm that you might expect in 100 years? Is that correct?
Uh no, it's it it has it's a storm of that intensity has a one in one in any one year has a one and one hundredth chance probability of occurring. And it's not that it's not that that's the worst that we would expect. It's just that that's the worst that we are are expected to design to. So buildings, for example, you know, buildings are not uh buildings are not built to withstand any force of nature ever. They're built to withstand what um what
Listen to that.
What the regulators have decided is um is probable, basically. Same thing with the stormwater. We we are required to design to a 100-year storm, not that that's the worst thing you're ever going to see in any.
Was this designed to on 100-100-year storm or not?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other question?
Yeah, Brian, I I gotta be honest with you. Um this is getting this is getting old. What, two, three years now, every time we have a major storm, we're right back here again. I would think by now we can just get this damn thing fixed. I hate to be just that blunt, but it's getting old. It really is.
Anyone else?
Yeah, if I may, Brian, um my question is, are there any other catch basins of similar sizes that also had the same problem? You know, you you're saying that there's multiple other areas that also flooded with this storm? And I understand that it's 100-year, it's designed for the probabl- probability of 100 years that in every 100 years, the peak would be that storm. That's when they say it's designed for 100 years. Is that not the case?
No, not, no.
Okay, but moving on, were there any other instances of with the same-sized ba- basin where it also flooded? Do you have any examples?
So the the basin, this is this is why this is why I'm I'm very much looking forward to separating these two systems because everybody keeps referring to the basin having failed. The basin did not fail. The basin held all of the water that it needed to hold. There there's no water came over the basin uh and and even if it did, it would have still been as designed. But the basin held all of the water it was required to.
So but will that fix the problem? Let's say next time a similar storm passes by, it's still not going to fix the problem? And will this whale be be able to handle?
Fix what problem?
The volume of water getting to the lake at such a rapid pace.
Not flooding people's basements?
So the the volume of water getting into the um
Lake gets such a rapid pace.
At at what you are considering a rapid pace is within the what is allowed by the regulations. So it was designed and functioned as it is required to.
Hey, anyone else have any questions?
One other thing, if I may, or was somebody else jumping in? Okay, so uh so what going back to uh Jim's point, there's plenty of land to increase the size of that basin. And um I I I think that that should definitely be looked at rather than just try and uh put another Band-Aid on this thing.
If I if I could just add that there is no need to increase the size of the basin. The basin is extremely oversized for for the normal storm events that it was designed to handle. If if you if you want to look back at the last CBA meeting that we had and look at the minutes, the chairman himself had made the statement for the audience that the the drainage system seems to be functioning fine. Most storms, it functions just the way it's supposed to. You cannot allow for these type of extreme storms in your design. No one can allow for it. The issue is that because you because you're not you don't know when you don't know the intensity. You can't say what the intensity is. You take takes you design for 100-year storm event, which is the worst case that you're required to and you and you size it for that, which this basin is extremely sized. According to the calculations with all the upland area that contributes to this basin and Candlelight Road, the 100-year storm event is about elevation 219.5. The top of the basin is 223. There's almost there's over three feet of reach space in the basin as it is, as it's designed. So it so it doesn't need to be any bigger. What you have is you have an issue with, it's just like if you if you took your kitchen sink and you got your drain at the bottom of the sink. If you had a five-gallon bucket of water and you poured it in slowly, it would all go down that drain. But if you dumped that five gallons all at once in the it would back up and the sink would put hold water until it had a chance to go down through that opening. Well, this is what happened. The 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 intensity of the storm was like dumping five gallons all at once into your sink instead of it, the slow trickle that it's supposed to as it contributes to the drainage area. And it it didn't have enough time for it to slowly dissipate and leave the system at a at a rate that it was designed to because it would surcharge and it flooded the manhole and it prevented the other pipe from being able to discharge.
I'd say there's a flaw in the design then.
The only flaw, there is no flaw in the design of the basin. The basin is sized adequately, is designed adequately with the proper outlet. The issue is when you have two separate systems coming into one structure like the manhole, then then you can't account for for the um the intensity of a storm like that. In normal storms, the the pavement in Silver.
That's a different story now, Bob, that you're saying. Now you're now you're putting a different component into what we were just talking about.
I'm saying the exact same thing that Liz has said about that manhole that the both pipes enter into before they can leave and go to the head wall.
Yeah, what we were talking about though was the size of the basin.
Basin is 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 sized properly.
I think I don't think it is.
If if it weren't sized properly, then
Would overflow, yes.
Would have overflowed. It did not overflow. Did anybody did anybody see any water going over the berm of that basin?
Liz, they're not questioning that. They're saying that there's so much water, there's so much water leaving the basin that in combination with Silver Lake Road, that volume is going out the outfall. And we're my disagreement with you is that that volume at such a, my words, rapid pace is getting to the lake carrying the sediment. I don't think it's appropriate for so much sediment so much sediment getting to the lake. I think there's a better way to do it so that sediment isn't getting to the lake. I think DEP thinks that because they're working with you to try and figure out a solution there. I thi- I think it's just, I think we need to I think we need to move on and hopefully we can get a a better solution here. And I think I hopefully Howard, every every indication from Howard seems to be that he's willing to work with us.
DEP hasn't um come to us with any problems that they have with sedimentation getting into the basin and not it's but not following this storm. We didn't hear from DEP at all. We're working with DEP because we have to get their approval if we modify this the basin and how it drains into the lake.
Are they are they asking for you to put a wet well in the basin for monitoring? Oh, okay. And that's what that's what I've I heard today, but may maybe I'm incorrect there.
I met on site with um Gary Domain about a week ago. We walked through the basin. He walked and he he was concerned. He he asked us if we could dig a test hole in the bottom of the basin for the determination of groundwater. He uh I explained to him that there was a my a standpipe in the bottom of the basin when they were trying to be proactive and pumping the basin out when they and the reason they had to do that was because they had the outlet blocked because they didn't want any sediment going to the lake. So they were allowing the sediment to build up and the water to build up in the bottom of the basin and they were pumping it to another location. Well, he that pipe is is basically five feet deep. He looked in it, it was dry. I told him that we would be removing that and at the time that we remove it, we would dig a test pit in that location and get them to determination where groundwater was because that was a concern of whether or not the infiltration was was sufficient enough. Uh but the issue is that we have a we have a procedure that we've established to to prepare the basin for final approval by DEP. That is to clean the bottom, to remove all the sediment that's in the bottom, scarify it, get the infiltration working again. Um and and we we have to do that. So, you know, we we believe that this, you know, the basin is 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 not the issue. It really isn't. He checked the up of the uh the up gradient slopes. He didn't see any issue of any corrosion or sedimentation going into the basin from up gradient. And um and we and if you there's a a report from Echotech dated today that said that he saw no sedimentation or silo basin in the lake. So I I mean, I don't know.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else have any questions? Anyone on the board? All right. So Jim, why don't we?
Yep. So we do have a couple um individuals from the public. Uh Mr. McNamara, are you still there? Mark, you still I see you on there. No, all right. Well, we'll come back to you, Mark. How about uh Kristen?
Hi, uh Kristen Moore, 93 Silver Lake Road. Um I I don't know really where to start. My property sits directly across the catch basin and um you know, again, based on Sunday's storm, my property was directly influenced. I had water sediment, sand, whatever we're calling it, um come directly into my property. And I'm not talking just in my driveway, in my home. So, you know, I am at a loss for words. I I look back at my records over the years. I've owned this property since 2016. I have documentation of flooding on Silver Lake Road into my property since October 2016, 16 different times. In eight of which, water, sediment, mud came directly into my property. I I I am at a loss as far as what to do. I have begged this board in the past and numerous town officials, state officials, to do something to hold this developer, this engineering firm accountable. I disagree respectfully with the engineer in that I watched that storm from start to finish. In the amount of water in the flow coming down that hill into that catch basin was basically a shot out of a Hawaiian waterfall. I don't understand why that is allowed to happen. Furthermore, I'm not sure why sediment and mud is also coming into my property if the appropriate measures are being taken by the developer to prevent that from happening. All of that is going directly into the lake. We have documentation of the rocks in the outflow area having sediment directly on them. And again, we're having the same situation, the same conversation over and over and over again with the excuse of being this was an unusual rainstorm. I think if you look back at the records of these board meetings, I think the talk of 100-year storm has come up six or seven times. Shockingly, this is the new normal around New England then. If we're getting this amount of rain on a regular basis and your engineering has to change to reflect that then because my property is being damaged and you're doing nothing to change it. That's all I have to say.
Kristen, where did you see the sediment in inside your house?
Into my garage. So it goes into my driveway, into my garage, and I have a bathroom on the backside of my property. So the water comes along the side of my house and it seeps through, I suppose, my foundation and it comes into my my bathroom. So the other thing too is, shockingly, I spoke to Mr. Fafford as he came to survey the area on Monday. And he talked to me and I asked him what he plans on doing in rectifying this problem. And unfortunately, he said, "Talk to the town. It's the town's problem." So, you know, to to your point before, everybody is passing blame, but yet we're not coming to a common solution to protect me, a taxpayer, in my property.
So you see actual mud in your?
Yes. Yes, it's not clean water. I have photographs and this has happened every single time it's flooded. So it's not clean water, which is a whole other concern of mine. And so that comes in directly into my property, into my living space, that their only rectification is we're going to sweep your driveway, which I feel is completely disrespectful and unacceptable. And that water goes directly into the lake. And I have photographs showing the path of the water on the side of my property going directly into the lake. So I'm not sure why we're arguing this because there's plenty of documentation to support this.
Okay. Thank you, Kristen.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Uh John, I see you over there.
John Costantino, 83 Silver Lake Road. Couple of statements were made tonight that I I take exception to also. First of all, it was mentioned several times that Silver Lake Road's been historically flooded. I've been there 36 years. Until all these developments came in and the new houses on Silver Lake Road, we never had the issue. There might have been some buildup of water in a couple of low spots, but that would go away. But once they removed all the trees, reshaped the land up above and everything, that's when all these problems started. You know, and if you're going to take away all the trees and then reshape the land, you know, you're going to have what what's happening now. Secondly, and I'm I'm a little bit confused on this, when you talk about the town's drainage system, is that just when they redid our road, the town regraded everything so that the water would go into these? Because as far as I know, we don't have a drainage system that the town has had all the years I've lived there. Because as far as I know, we don't have a drainage system that the town has had all the years I've lived there. You know, so I don't know what you're talking about about the town's drainage system. Could you fill me in on that, please?
Yep. So when they when the town regraded the road. And repaved it, one of the improvements that they asked us to. They asked us to look into designing was for. Was for some drainage attenuation to to prevent to prevent. You know, flooding to whatever extent practical and to clean the water. Before it gets discharged to the to eventually to the pond. So. There are. I I don't know the numbers, but further away from. Further away from Lakeview Estates and where Candlelight is and towards. That's Cross Street, right? Or Center? There's there. There was actually room for us to put a small underground detention basin. In and so there's a there's a catch basin in Silver Lake Road now. Down down further that discharges to that small. Underground basin. And then up where Candlelight is. They there are there were catch basins installed and a particle separator. The particle separator is. Is primarily for removing the sediment prior to discharge to that outlet in the. Which is sharing the same swell as as the outlet for. The Lakeview. So there were improvements made in a few places where there was. The ability for us to provide an engineering solution for some drainage.
Hey, John, you have any other questions?
Yeah, just one more question to that temporary road that you keep talking about. That's actually someone's property. When is that going to be returned back to him? The water's not draining out of there onto the street. It's regraded like it should be and not with those rocks and everything that are there because again, it is the person's property. And, you know, they got that temporary road, which is an ice hole. So I don't know. I know further up they're throwing mulch on it. It's eventually going to just rot away and floating down. But I'm more concerned with the rest of it that they're just leaving there and. You know, if they're going to do anything with that road or just leave it.
I think Alex will probably have to speak to that. I don't know what temporary road. And I don't think it's part of the drain. Maybe Bob knows. I don't know. But. It's not part of what I looked at as far as the drainage analysis is concerned.
So here so here again.
I think that's right. Well, you know.
What's that?
I thought that was open space that.
No, the temporary road was the access that was created by the developer. When when they were trying to protect Silver Lake Road from sediment coming down Candlelight. So what they that's you remember there was a large, like a four foot high. Wood chip berm across the end of Candlelight. So you couldn't access in and out of Candlelight. So they created this this bypass around that house. And I don't know why it's still there. I agree. I mean, it's it's if if there was sediment. In Silver Lake Road during the drainage event. It probably came from that area because there's nothing else that's that's exposed along Candlelight at all.
Well, the the town also. When the town paved repaved Silver Lake, they spread loom along the edges. They never seeded it. So there is some loom coming from that, but we. I I will get that seeded that whole area. I already that's why we spread the woodchips just. Because it right now is a terrible time to try to grow grass. But my plan is to get that all hydroseeded and just green. It's open space. So. That that will definitely be all take before the next meeting, I'll have that all seeded.
They're going to pick up the rest of the some of those hay bales along the road, especially over by the old. Boat ramp. There's some of those hay bale swatches there. There were some of them in somebody's property. Those need to be cleaned up and picked up also.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, I don't know if you noticed, but we got rid of all the soap fence and. Yeah, we'll I'll get rid of all those hay hay bales. That's that's not an issue. I'll I'll make sure that's all done.
Thank you, Alex. John, you have any more question? You all set, John?
Yes, thank you.
Jim, this is Mark McNamara. May I speak?
Sure.
So I I live on I live on Bryant Road. I've been here for almost 31 years. This this excuse we keep giving here for this hundred year storm is just that. It's an excuse. In the 31 years I've lived here, we've never had had water like we had in the flooding. Liz of G and H G and H mentioned earlier today that she spoke to Don DiMartino. And Don mentioned that all the usual places that would get water, got water. Well, Bryant Road is doesn't has never had that before in the 31 years I've lived here. So that's an excuse. Secondly, Alex mentioned that they seeded. Funny how they hydroseeded a day before. This meeting that we're having today. I believe that we had a meeting, a Zoom meeting in May or beginning of June where they talked about hydro seeding. That was not done. So now we're five weeks or six weeks past that time and they seeded the day before this Zoom meeting. Second, the next portion is we talk about Jim mentioned earlier about dust. Reminiscing dust problems. I shouldn't have to call the town on a regular basis to complain about dust. If Alex and the Fafford Companies and told that there's a dust problem, it shouldn't require a phone call to the town. Every day to say there's not a watering truck there or a pail being pulled behind a pickup truck. And then the last thing is. Alex mentioned that they're sweeping the streets. Alex has a pickup truck. That he pulls a sweeper with a bucket of water behind it. And I hate to tell you, Alex, but your machine's broken because. It's not picking anything up. Alls it's doing is kicking the rocks into the middle of the road. So I don't know who it was that mentioned earlier. It might have been Peter. The Fafford Companies seem to be reactive and not proactive. We've had this conversation numerous times. We've had these problems numerous times and the answer is always, oh, we'll take a look at it or we're going to fix it. And yet nothing ever gets done. The sweep up sweeping on the streets with no water is causing the same amount of dust as if you didn't sweep it. Just because you drive there daily without a without the proper sweeping equipment doesn't mean that you're sweeping the streets the way they should be. Now, the last point is. The water that came from here came from both sides of this development. And you can't tell me that once Hardscape is put in. That the flow is not going to increase because there's no place for the water to go. So I think Kristen mentioned it earlier. We've had these conversations numerous times and nothing seems to get done. So I hope that the town takes it serious. We've talked to the state. And this gets fixed so that the next meeting we have, we're not talking about the same thing over and over and over again. So, you know, like I said, I hope the town takes this serious and stops being and ask that Fafford becomes more proactive instead of reactive.
Well, can I defend myself for?
Of course you can.
So the area we hydroseeded. In the previous meeting, we were talking about the piles. We had piles of material everywhere that were unstable, piles of loom.
Three piles was the number, yes.
Yeah. So we did. We did hydroseed those. We were in in between that time. We were blasting ledge. In the area that I hydroseeded yesterday. So we just got that all.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect. There was sorry, Alex, that's incorrect. The blasting is the back of the north part of the property. The middle of the property was not being blasted.
It was at the last meeting. And we got it graded off now. And now we have loom on it. And then we sprayed it.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. And and then I do have a. I know I I've spoken with the DEP multiple times about the dust. I'm doing everything. That I can to keep it down. We're spraying thousands of gallons of water a day. That's a 500 gallon tank. It's it's making multiple passes. A day where you can ask the the town DPW like we are filling up constantly there. We're making as many passes as we can. We're not allowed to use any additives. We can't use calcium. Or anything because we're close to wetlands. So we have to use water and water only. And it we're we're making multiple passes. And as far as like the sweeping the streets. I I use that that water tanker to wet it wet down the streets and then we tried to hit it. We even fill. I I brought in two different types of sweepers. I know the one I pull behind. Yeah, that is. I agree. It's it's a piece of junk, but it has water. But I that's why we brought in the second one, which which picks up. Anything that's kicked up in the middle of the road. That's why I was passing the street and pushing it to the middle of the road. Because that sweeper is designed to pick it up in the middle. So I was pushing it away from the sides. So that the the big white one, I don't know if you saw that.
I saw both, yep.
And I I'll work with you if you want. If you see me, you can talk to me. I'll I'll. I'll work with you. Like if you see some or you have. Any complaints, just just talk to me and I'll I'll work with you. I don't want to like. Like, yeah, aggravate or make your life miserable, you know. But I'll do everything I can, but.
Here's the thing. I'm telling you right now that you're the the white truck is broken. There's no water coming out of it. And then as far as the watering, last week I called the state. I talked to Michelle from the state. Yeah, I believe I believe it was on Friday and she was told by you, I believe. That there was no activity on that site today and there were three tractor trails at 8 a.m. picking up loom. On that day. And that week, there wasn't a water truck on site that week. Prior to that, you're absolutely correct. You had a water truck out there. And it typically seems to be out there when I speak to Michelle. But that week it wasn't out there. And on that Friday, and I think you'll agree to this. I believe you mentioned to Michelle, you told her that there was no activity on site. That day, but there was one truck picking up loom. Well, there were two trucks, as I'll repeat myself, there were two trucks at 8 a.m. Picking up loom. So my point is, Alex, is that would just be we'd be honest. And if you're going to water. Water on a consistent basis. If you're going to sweep the streets, use a sweeper that's not broken.
Yeah, well, I I feel like I'm I'm doing that. Yeah, all right. Well. You're saying there was two trucks at 8 and that there wasn't water. Like I. I I don't know what what you want me to do about that. Like the I'm telling you, we're when I have activity up there, I have water and.
Well, there wasn't water on activity at 8 a.m. on Friday morning when the two 18 wheelers. So it either it either gets done or it doesn't get done. So my my point to you is if there's going to be activity and you know when. You know when trucks are going in because you have your people there. The water truck should be there in advance of an 18 wheeler pulling in. The water truck should be there watering it down. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, I feel like that's what we've been doing. And like if you if you found like one moment made the water truck. Was like 10 minutes behind it because it was filling up at the DPW. I'm sorry that happened. But like.
Alex, at 11:57 a.m. when I spoke to the state of Massachusetts, there was not a water truck on site. Now, if he takes that long to fill up his truck, I don't know what time he starts in the morning. You said it's a 500 gallon tank. I don't know what time he starts filling it up, but I would assume it doesn't take more than an hour to fill your tank up. At 11:57 a.m., there was no trucks on site on that Friday.
All right, Mark, with that.
Yeah, all I can say is we're doing everything within the regulations and. But I don't I don't know what else to say.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Is there any other questions from the public?
I see Kristen has her hand back up.
Kristen, if if you don't mind, if if it's a new item or if it's a if you're going to. Reiterate something that's been said, just please say that.
Yeah, I I it's just very quick. I think it would make sense. I'm not sure why Don DiMartino does not attack doesn't attend these meetings. When the developer is is up for discussion because it seems like there's a lot of reference. To DPW and there's a lot of back and forth like Don said this and but I I think that he needs to be here. To actually speak to this board as far as what his opinion is about the town drainage and so forth. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Kristen. Anyone else?
I think I see Melissa.
Melissa, the same thing to you as well. It's been said, please just offer some new insight.
Hi, yeah, I won't reiterate any of the other points. My new insight would just be. That I I do take exception to the notion that the lake wasn't didn't have silt or I might have missed the comment here, but I. Would be surprised if DEP hasn't been in touch with you yet. I'm assuming they will be soon because. Another thing that's been documented is the lake once again was completely brown following the runoff event. Just silt. So I don't I understand there's calculations, there's math, but this is a precious resource of this town. The YMCA hosts a summer camp here. People bring their families here. And this lake is just getting blatantly disrespected over and over again. And I because of all these runoff issues. So it's somewhat heartbreaking as a person who moved to the lake. To enjoy the lake and just to watch the quality of it degrade right in front of my eyes. I'm quite upset about that. And this is a town resource. So I. Everyone in here is appalled as I am outside the personal property damage that people have been talking about. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else, Jim?
Not seeing anyone else.
Thank you. Alex, have you worked on other projects? As a Fafford project in other community?
Yeah, I worked in Houston and Amesburg.
Do you have the same kinds of problems in those communities?
No, I mean, because I think I feel like this is a hypercharged. Because of that initial breach of that basin, that that was like that was horrible. And the. The basin breached basin seat. That that just. That should have never happened. And I think that just got everyone on the wrong foot.
If you don't have problems like this in other communities, this is problems are unique to this particular development, in your opinion.
Yeah, I've been I've been here like I'd say since 20, about five years. And it's just mostly been. This general stuff, just. Working up stuff with the towns and like getting roads approved and things like that.
Thank you. Jim, what do we need to do like?
So if the board so chooses, the request is for a continuation. The request is for a continuation for one year.
Okay. Peter's tapping his screen. I think he has something to say.
No, I I actually missed what Jim had just said. Sorry, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the requests as it is each month is from Angela submitted a letter for a request for an extension of one year.
All right. Does anyone on the board have any opinions?
Were we supposed to meet back about deciding whether they were going to get more building permits or? Based on their performance or was that has that already passed?
So so, yeah, so a few months back, there was discussion of, yeah, completion of infrastructure for building permits. They did complete that. Activity and provided a security bond. So we are at we we have passed that point at the moment.
So we have no recourse for the residents at this point.
Well, no, no, I think that's a different that's a different topic. There's a security bond in place and there's additional permits that certainly have to be requested. You know, they're still in phase one at this point.
I think with regard to with the basin especially is that the extension should be not for that long a period.
I agree 100%.
Anyone else have any comments?
If they do not, my I have a question. If they do not get the permit, how what would happen next? And would that solve the problem? The problems would still be there. So that that's my.
Yeah, so you know, I I don't wanna speak for the board, but I mean, I think that's kind of the balance that we're working with the applicant right now is um is so attempting to solve issues um while, you know, monitoring it closely um as opposed to completely um you know, shutting everything down.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
For well over a year or two now, we've begged and asked this developer to be proactive, not reactive. Um it seems we've had probably a dozen or so hundred year storms down there so far. We need to stay on top of this. Um you just let them go for a year? Absolutely not. There's just way too many issues down there.
All right. So I would recommend that I'll move to X to continue until uh next month, next meeting, 30 days.
That would be August 6.
To August 6.
If there's a motion, second it.
All right. Somebody have any discussion?
It's always month to month until we see some some action that makes our residents feel better.
Yeah, and I I would ask the I would ask the applicant and the and Liz, um you could, the next meeting, give us an action plan of how we're gonna address the runoff and any other issues that we've sort of discussed and identified tonight. And hopefully there won't be any new ones that pop up. But I really do think it's in everyone's best interest, including uh the applicant, to solve these problems and prevent problems before they happen because the it's a very large development. It's kind of been going on for a number of number of years and um it's just being a good neighbor and it's it's not good for the Fafford name, I'm sure, to uh have these kinds of criticisms of the the of their work and what's being done. It's just not good for anyone. So I hope that the applicant recognizes that it it, you know, going out of uh their way will uh improve their standing in the town and will go a very long way. I've said that before. It doesn't happen. Uh applicant proceeds at at its own peril, I suppose. But at some point, we can't, we're just gonna have to pull the plug. We're just gonna not extend this any further and it'll go its way through the courts and that'll take its course. But I I think at some point, we just need to say enough is enough and take a stand. And whether or not that has any sort of lasting impact, who knows? So any other discussion?
I would like to add, sorry, I'd like to add, you know, for the applicant to put their places and the people who are getting their basement flooded, imagine all of that is happening to you. How would you react? Wouldn't you want it to be solved as soon as possible? So put yourself in their shoes and react accordingly, be proactive and prevent it from happening more. From based on what I've heard, it's been happening over and over and it's not been only a few months. It's been years, which is a bit mind boggling. So I I just urge you to put put yourself in your in their shoes and try to fix it. Whether it's engineering, whether it's uh recon touring, whether it's the additional pipe, uh expanding, you know, adding a basin. I I you know more about the engineering of stormwater design than I do, but there has to be a way. You can't just, you know, just remove the connection. They're still gonna, the same amount of water is gonna happen. Yes, it's a 1% chance per year. But according to the past history, it's it's probably gonna happen again and quite soon. And based on some of the comments, it did not used to flood like this and this is a new occurrence. So that that's my only finally comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, um Jim, do we have a bond in place right now?
Yeah, yes, the applicant has or the developer has provided a bond, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Sustained? All right, that passes. Thank you. We'll see you on August when? 6?
6.
August 6. Thank you.
Okay. Nice job, Brian.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Um is that new public hearing for a comprehensive permit um for uh 40B for 161 Mechanic Street? Um do I have a motion to open the hearing?
The move.
All right. So um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Mister Chairman, if I may, uh I have to recuse myself from this meeting. So uh just to let you know that I need to be recused.
Okay, do I do we need to appoint someone to sit in his place then, Jim?
Yeah, so let's let's real quick administratively. So what I'll do is I'll read the public hearing. Uh then you can uh have a motion to open the hearing a second. Uh then we'll vote on that. Art, you've already announced that you're recusing yourself. And then, yes, you'll, Brian, you'll need to appoint one of the uh the alternates to then uh sit in on this meeting. All right, so I'll I'll just quickly read the public hearing. Uh the Bellingham Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on July 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Remotely via the Zoom online option for the request of a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23 as amended. The applicant is Campanelli Clark, Bellingham LLC, 1 Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Mass. O2185. Owner is TMC Holdings and Development LLC, 24 Williams Way, Bellingham, Mass. O2019. Request is to construct five four-story residential buildings containing 250 rental apartments on the property of 161 Mechanic Street, map 51 Lot 4A, 165 Mechanic Street, map 51 Lot H, 167 Mechanic Street, map 51 Lot 6, 175 Mechanic Street, map 51 Lot 5, and map 50, uh the property is owned business one and agriculture. The application may be viewed online at the town's website on the zoning board webpage. Anyone wishing to be heard shall attend at the time and place above. Motion open here?
All right, motion. Okay, so um.
Mr. Chairman. I recuse myself.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
I also, um I don't believe there's any conflict. There's no financial gain my part. Uh but the board should know I am a direct butter of the lot 4A. Mr. Paterson in particular. But again, I do not feel there's any conflict on my part unless anyone else does.
Okay. How does the rest of the board feel? You, Peter, you're in a butter to the project?
No, to the property owner of Lot 4A.
Oh.
He's my neighbor.
Oh, that's your problem, Peter.
Hey, you fed my cat tonight. I'm good. I just wanna make the board know that I am a neighbor of the owner of the lot.
Yeah, as long as the rest of the board doesn't feel any objections, um I think it's so noted, but I think it's okay with me.
Thank you.
So Brian, I think we need a second. Second? All those in favor? Okay.
Excellent. So so uh this is the first meeting of uh the comprehensive permit uh for uh what is essentially a 250 unit apartment complex on Mechanic Street. Um I think uh you 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 have in your package a plan set and a lot of other information. Um I know the applicants are here tonight that can provide um a brief PowerPoint presentation, I believe. Um and then uh you know, we could certainly dive into uh the different aspects of this project. This is the first uh time you'll get to see it. Um I will say just two things upfront. Uh the Board of Selectmen uh have uh recommended or have supported this through a friendly 40B. So as you guys are well aware, you know, uh 40B, a comprehensive permit, has two different avenues. Uh one is to just go right to the state uh and uh and what is can be deemed an unfriendly 40B. We've had those certainly. Um and this one went through the channels to meet with the selectmen, uh meet with the town and explain what they're looking to do. Uh and the the board, the the board, uh select board voted in favor to support as a friendly 40B. So that goes to the state uh for their uh to show their support. Uh the other aspect, which I'm I'm sure the applicant's probably going to uh discuss, but uh the one thing that I I will point out and one of the main drivers for what the select board has uh supported this for was not only the location, but the fact that this would get us above our 10%. So that that's key for anyone who's, you know, unfamiliar with that. Uh the state law requires that um all communities have 10% of their housing stock as of as deemed affordable. Now, that 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 term uh is, you know, a very specific term. Um and they have rates in which uh that they deem affordable. Um and so right now, uh are the town percentages, I believe, by 8.7% um as affordable. This would get uh the town of Bellingham over that hump of 10%. And what that truly means is that the town would no longer be susceptible to uh future 40Bs. You would be back in control. You would have, you would be in the driver's seat to uh to approve or disapprove of any type of 40B that may come before you. That doesn't mean you have to deny them. You could certainly, if there's something that's uh uh very uh supportive for the town, you certainly could support those, but that doesn't mean you, it means that your local bylaws are now back in effect. Uh so that's all I have. Uh Brian, I if you want, I believe the applicant has a brief presentation. I could share the screen if you're good with that.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a good way to just introduce the project.
So Russ, is that you or is that Jesse?
Uh it's me, if you can hear me.
Yep, so I will make you co-host and you now should have the ability to share screen.
Okay, um so I have my screen up. I have a rendering and aerial view. Can everyone see that?
Not yet, no.
Not yet? Okay, hold on. Let me just go through the mechanics. Um Jim, do I need to hit a particular button?
Yeah, the green share screen.
Got it.
And it will give you a couple of options. You can hit one of the whatever screen you wanna present.
All right.
There we go.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, first off, Jim, thank you for that introduction. Much appreciated. Your kind words and you covered you covered some of my presentations. So I'll try to be brief through those points. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Russell Dion. I am a partner of Campanelli Clark, Bellingham LLC. And I thank you for this opportunity to present our application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to the general laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23 as amended, for the issuance of a comprehensive permit authorizing the applicant to construct 250 apartment homes to be called the Curtis Apartments, consisting of 15 acres, mostly vacant and blighted land, located between addresses 161 and 175 Mechanic Street in Bellingham, as Jim just described. Our comprehensive permit application contains extensive details, narratives, facts, statistics, and information regarding the project, as well as a full list of waivers being requested from the Bellingham zoning regulations. I don't assume at this time that the board has had a full opportunity to extensively review the entire details of the applicant application. Therefore, given this web-based presentation format, I'll try to be reasonably brief in an executive in an executive summary manner to summarize this project and its merits. Our project team is available for questions that you may have at its conclusion. As Jim had mentioned, the applicant's name is Campanelli Clark, Bellingham LLC, the joint venture between Campanelli Development and TMC Holdings Development, President Matthew Clark. Our project team is an architect BKA from Brockton, Mass. Our civil engineer is Fuller Engineering from Southborough, and Jesse Johnson will make a little narrative a little later. Our legal group is Freeman Law Group, and we have with us this evening Peter Freeman and Alana Kirk from that office. Our housing consultant is Mark O'Hagan. He is on the Zoom line as well. Our environmental consultant is Guarded Consulting, and our traffic engineer is Ron Miller and Associates. And Ron is on the line, I believe, as well. And the construction, the construction entity of this project will be Campanelli Associates Construction Corporation. The site is located as the at the addresses noted earlier, between 161 and 175. It's a 15 acre site on the east side of Bellingham along Route 140, also known as Mechanic Street. And the site lies on the south side of the street, slightly less than one quarter mile from the Franklin Town Line. The site lies in a larger region. The site is just under a point nine miles from the site to the Franklin commuter rail, the Forge Park commuter rail. The 15 acre site is also only 1.5 miles from 495. In the proximity of the region within a five mile radius is over 9 million square feet of commercial and industrial employers. And that excludes retail and restaurant employers. Some of those parks you're very familiar with is certainly the Forge Park Business Park, is the Campanelli Business Park. And there's also the Franklin Industrial Park, as well as many, many other commercial and industrial users in the region. Just gonna give you a brief narrative of our approach to the project. Our goal is to be received by the community as a friendly 40B community, as evidenced by our experiences to date with the Bellingham and town and state officials. We take our design approach to creating multifamily apartment communities very sensitively. Our primary design goal is to create a pedestrian-friendly and resident-focused environment for our residents. With this design intent, we strive to achieve a neighborhood organized around a central community green. The central community green includes shading trees, walkways, park benches, lighting, open lawn areas surrounded by apartment homes, orchards, and anchored by a resident clubhouse and leasing center. The central green allows residents a space to socialize, gather, and recreate outside of their apartment homes. The central green also allows residents to have a direct sightline and pathways from one building to another without traversing over a sea of parking and without obstructed views of parking lots and vehicles. The clubhouse, excuse me, the clubhouse is the hub of the residential community, including many amenities such as outdoor living rooms, terraces, fire pit patio, swimming pool, sun deck, fitness center, club room, game room, mail hub, live workspaces, leasing office, and more. The vehicular movements are planned on a driveway network set back from the central green and around the opposite the opposite side of the apartment building, providing a front door to the apartment homes from the parking areas, while the central green provides a spacious backyard of over 2.5 acres of open space. Other amenities provided on site are children's playground, a dog park, and a recycling center. As Jim had mentioned, I'll do this my point of work on the screen to the folks in the audience. I'll just assume it does. This is this is.
Yeah, it's in the era.
Okay, great. So so this is Mechanic Street here. This is the primary entrance. I'll talk about that in a few moments. This is the leasing center here. This is built apartment building 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. This is the network of roadway and parking. We have as a buffer between the community and the abutters, we have our covered garages, which we have nine garages for a total of 81 covered parking spaces. The total parking spaces on site are 425 spaces, of which 344 are surface, potentially breaks down to one parking space, excuse me, 1.7 parking spaces per unit and 1.14 parking spaces per bedroom. The site has 54% pervious surfaces and 46% impervious, which would be walkways, pavement, and buildings and roofs. As Jim had mentioned, the current zoning of the parcel, the parcel is the red line here along Mechanic Street. Uh two thirds of the parcel is zoned in a business one district. The business one district follows the profile of Mechanic Street and has a setback of 420 feet. The remaining third of the lot is in an agricultural district. The site is surrounded by business and industrial districts to the north, an industrial district to the east, an agricultural district to the south, and a business district district to the west. As Jim had mentioned, this this puts a visual on his description of the lot. As Jim had mentioned, this, this puts a visual on his description of the lots. Currently, um, TMC Holdings has clear ownership, title ownership to every lot with the light green color. That would be lot fifty-one four, which is a vacant lot, lot fifty-one four B, which is a vacant lot in lot number one sixty-seven, which was a formerly single-family home, which that home has been removed recently. The site is also comprised of three other lots, one sixty-one, which is a single-family home and a a barn that's being used as a small commercial building, one sixty-five, which is a single-family home, and one seventy-five, which is a single-family home. All three of those properties are currently under agreement via PNS and, and will be, um, at the conclusion of this process be closed on successfully through, through the process. The remainder of the site, one seventy-seven and one seventy-nine, the two auto shops, they are not part of this project at this time. However, um, TMC Holdings outside of the venture with Campagnelli has a PNS to procure those two lots. This is the site in its current condition today. This is, this is the open scourged lot that's been used for a variety of outdoor uses over the past thirty to forty years from contractor yards to earthwork operations and in miscellaneous, um, storage over time. This is the single family at one sixty-one. This is the vacant lot fifty-one four B. This is a current single-family lot at one sixty-seven, excuse me, one sixty-five. One sixty-seven is, is the home that's been, um, already removed from the site and then one seventy-five. One of the pieces of this site, as, as you saw on the previous slide, there's a, there's a right-of-way here, which is currently owned by TMC Holdings. And what we're going to do is create a contiguous lot here for future development. And this little sliver of land will be replacement of that. So this will be a contiguous parcel for the Curtis. With that, um, in the comprehensive permit application is a sip, a full civil design package, including site layout, drainage, and landscape design. But I'd like to invite Jesse Johnson from Bowler Engineering to make a few comments as it relates to the waivers and, and the impacts and the stormwater, um, approach. Jesse?
Thank you, Russ. Good evening, everybody. Jesse Johnson from Bowler Engineering. Looked at it, looked at what the natural topography was, what the uses were surrounding it, what the shape of the lot was, and spent a lot of time with Russ and Campagnelli and trying to fit a project that we thought made sense in this area and for the land. We try not to fight it too much. As you're looking at this plan, if you go from Curtis Pond on your right to the left, you have a natural gradual slope going from that top of that pond down to the other end. So we really didn't fight that with our design and we placed our, our buildings accordingly to try to get them off the outer edges, to be sensitive to the neighbors in the back. As Russ had mentioned, access being around the perimeter, uh, to allow for the green space in the middle. And we were careful to design the grading in such a way that we weren't doing really significant cuts on the high side near Curtis Pond and really, really big fills on the bottom side. So you'd have a, uh, large retaining walls where, uh, we had to, to basically blend in with the bottom on the, on the left-hand side. So we did spend quite a bit of time on that. And in doing that, we also were sensitive to what the local waivers would be for your design guidelines locally, your zoning bulk requirements, and spent a lot of time to try to make sure that any relief we did need was going to be for what we consider something minor. So we, we spent a lot of time looking at your stormwater guidelines and went over and above. Uh, I know that's a sensitive subject based on what I just heard previously, and I can go into that in a little bit. Uh, but also even just making sure we were sensitive to the neighbors in the back. Uh, for instance, one of the waivers we're asking for is a rear yard offset that's twenty feet. We're asking for fifteen, but it's to the parking garages on the backside. It's not to the primary buildings. You can see those are fairly far off those back areas, and that allows us to screen them more uh, and also get those down in elevation a little bit more so that their, their massing is not as obstructive as you might be, as if we had them up against the property lines that you often see for some designs. Uh, we do have some other waivers that we're asking for, but the bulk of them are local design guidelines, things like showing every twelve-inch tree on the plans, uh, more aesthetics for plans that we're asking for. Nothing that's, that we feel is out of character for standard engineering practice. Uh, there's a bunch of them. We can go into them if you wanted to, or, um, I could just highlight the fact that there's probably only a handful you might ask about, uh, one of them being the height that you require to be thirty-five feet. Uh, we have a forty-seven foot height requirement that we're needing for these buildings. But again, we tried to make up for that by setting the buildings down lower and getting them off the property lines. We do obviously have some utilities that we need to extend into the site, uh, to take care of these, uh, these buildings and the property itself. One of them being water. We work closely with the DPW. They asked that we tie into the water system behind us and create a loop that would improve the water quality and circulation for the whole area. So we do show a water line that's going to connect into that back residential project and then tie into Mechanic Street, but after looping through our project. So that was a request by the DPW that we tried to accommodate. Another is the sewer system. The town sewer actually comes into this site going from the bottom of the page towards the top into the residential, uh, project behind us, picks up their sewage, then does a U-turn and then heads back out to Mechanic Street. It's a very old sewer line that's had some, I guess, history of I and I in the area. We actually need to relocate and replace a good portion of that for our project. So by the benefit of what we need for our project, we're going to improve the infrastructure within the city's, uh, system already. The stormwater, though, I think is the biggest thing that, uh, we've spent a lot of time on. We did an initial analysis of a culvert that goes underneath Mechanic Street that's right near that, uh, that right-of-way that Russ was just mentioning that we're going to be eliminating. Essentially, all of the runoff from this site and abutting areas and even the road itself goes to this one culvert area that the existing analysis showed is not where, not where we need it to be. It was severely undersized. And our initial design was to tie into that because that's where it goes now and proposed to upgrade it. Uh, but after looking at that further and getting some comments back through the MEEPA process, we decided to revisit the drainage design and have a very conservative approach in that we are going to maintain all the stormwater on-site for a hundred-year storm event. Again, uh, talking about that hundred-year storm event that you guys were discussing earlier, you do have in your local stormwater bylaw, bylaws, a requirement or a request to consider the, what most people refer to as the Cornell rain amount or rainfall amounts. Those consider climate change and they're much more conservative than what, uh, MASTEP requires you to use. Just for instance, a hundred-year storm event by your regulations requires us to analyze eight point seven five inches for TR fifty-five. Those typically average six inches for most communities. So conservatively, uh, a much bigger rainfall amount that we took into consideration for this design. Um, as was mentioned before, I know it was talked about a lot, you are allowed to discharge from your site to at least be under what was preconditioned here. Uh, we've actually designed it so that we have no discharge off our project for the hundred-year storm event. Everything is going to be directly infiltrated back into the ground through either two underground systems or one above-ground basin. So we selected three areas, um, spread out on the site, so it's not all concentrated to, uh, equalize the recharge, equalize the mitigation, and be again, a very conservative approach with our stormwater design. We have seven times the recharge amount that we're required to by stormwater guidelines. We have four times the water quality volume that we're required to by stormwater guidelines. Uh, we also did seventeen test holes throughout the site to make sure we characterize the soils properly and the groundwater properly. So we felt we did a lot of due diligence and we're very sensitive, um, to the fact that we are upstream of the Charles River watershed. We have a sensitive receptor with Curtis Pond near us. Uh, so we put a lot of effort into that, and I think that's something we can feel proud about with this design. Uh, that, that obviously will have to be peer reviewed, but, um, I'm willing to answer any questions you might have on that tonight, uh, given some of your earlier discussions and sensitivities towards that. And I think that's, that's really a general overview of everything, but I can answer anything you might have. And I think we would turn it over to traffic.
Thanks, Jess. Okay, so I'm going to just give, Ron Mueller's on the phone, but I'm just going to give a quick brief on that. And then when we're through, if there's any, um, questions, we can certainly go back. I just wanted to point out on this screen before we go to the next slide. This is our ent, main entrance into the facility, which aligns perpendicular to the subdivision road that's being built here for the industrial complex and the new residential complex, Ring Road. And this is a right-turn-only exit road that goes out onto one forty and exit for the residents. At the request of some of our earlier meetings with the town, it was requested that there also be a second means of emergency access to the site. So this would be obviously available to police, fire, and rescue, but as, as an entrance, but only in a right-turn-only exit. So the signal, this is, this is, um, a plan that shows, this is the driveway into the Curtis Apartment here. This is the subdivision road into the industrial and residential development being designed and constructed by Lincoln Properties. And this here is Mechanic Street. Our portion of the work, as you come from the Franklin Line and, and Maple Street, would be to provide a left-turn-only lane to turn into the, the Curtis and also to widen the road to, for that left-hand turn lane to have room, remove the curb, and then have a blend strip come back. And we would also provide a DOT sidewalk arrangement along the entire frontage of the property. Also, here is a little detail of the right turnout that I spoke about previously that would be wide enough for fire apparatus to arrive to the site there. So here, the full access driveway is shown in red as we, we just walked you through and is located directly across from the subdivision road. Secondary right-hand turnout driveway is also proposed on the east side of our site. Both driveway locations provide adequate site distances to allow for safe operator operation. Traffic study that, that submitted focuses on the impact of the project on Route forty between downtown Bellingham and the Franklin Line. At the request of the planning staff, traffic counts were counted at two-area apartment developments. The Charles on Route one twenty-sixth and the Westerly about one quarter mile down on Route one forty, just at the Bellingham Franklin Line, to develop local trip generation data. The local data was comparable with, but slightly lower than IT rates for apartments. Using the IT rates, the residential development is expected to generate average traffic per day as follows. Thirteen hundred and sixty weekday daily trips, one hun, excuse me, six hundred and eighty entering and six hundred and eighty exiting. Eighty-four vehicle trips during the weekday AM peak hour estimated at twenty-two entering and sixty-two exiting. And one hundred and seven vehicle trips, sixty-five entering and forty-two exiting. Excuse me, sixty-five entering and forty-two exiting during the weekday PM peak hour. The traffic volume increases are expected to be greatest on Mechanic Street east of the site with fifty to sixty additional vehicles expected during peak hours. These increases represent on average about one vehicle trip per minute during the peak hours. Smaller increases in traffic are expected during the other hours. The capacity analysis shows that all studied intersections will operate at acceptable levels under the two thousand twenty-seven future no-build and build conditions with the planned intersection and improvements in downtown Bellingham. Although long delays are expected for traffic existing on the site, exiting the site onto Route one forty, the Lincoln Properties warehouse development has committed to a future signalization of the intersection. With signalization, the intersection will operate at acceptable levels of service at B to C. To mitigate the traffic impacts of the project, Route one forty will be widened into free and will provide a dedicated westbound left-turn lane opposite the eastbound left-turn lane proposed by Lincoln Properties. In addition, a ten-foot shared-use path is being proposed along the site frontage to facilitate bicycle and transportation travel with connections to the proposed apartment complex in the nearby neighborhood. I'm going, the, the comprehensive permit application also has a full architectural design package, including architectural plans for the apartments and clubhouse, elevations, and renderings. I'm just going to walk you through a few of the schematic images here, um, but not describe them in great detail.
Yeah, maybe just a quick kind of walkthrough.
Sure. So, so the rendering on the left is, is one of the, uh, one of the five apartment buildings that range from fifty units to forty-six units, depending on its position in the site. The, the image on the upper right is the clubhouse and leasing center. And, and those are just repeated images below. These are the elevations of the building, front and back, garden and parking, and then the side, the side views of the buildings. The buildings are designed to have some variability with, with the plane. Uh, it's just not a large box. The facade moves in and out several times over the length of the facade in the porches or can't leave it from the facade to give additional pliability and, and visual interest to the facade.
And the, the height, what is the exemption that you guys are looking for? Cause it's, Jim, yours, it's thirty-five feet is what's by the bylaws?
Forty-seven feet is the height.
Okay, so it's going about twelve feet above.
Correct.
Or so, I guess, okay.
Correct. The plans have been developed to have a variety of units from one-bedroom to one-bedroom dens to two bedrooms, to three bedrooms. We have a, a criteria of ten percent for three bedrooms. And the affordable, well, I'll talk about the unit mix in just a minute. The affordables are equally distributed throughout each building and throughout each floor. Um, they need to be equitably distributed throughout the project. The leasing center here, um, is full of a bunch of amenities. We have a, the, at the front, we have the leasing center and a mail and packy, package concierge. We have a fitness center here. We have a game room here. We have a club room with a kitchen here. And that all leads out to some outdoor terraces that lead towards a pool. Unit summary can be summarized as ninety-five one-bedroom units, thirty-one one-bedroom den units, ninety-nine two-bedroom units, twenty-five three-bedroom units, and which equates to two hundred and fifty, for a total of sixty-three affordable units, which is the twenty-five percent state statute equally distributed over the unit. As Jim had mentioned earlier, the current subsidized housing inventory in Bellingham is at eight point seven percent with, with the way the state defines affordable housing when they are rented and not for ownership. All one hundred percent of the units would qualify for affordable units in your SHI count, which two hundred and fifty units would raise your count to twelve point one percent. The two percent would give you a buffer of, the, excuse me, two percent would give you a buffer to the state regulatory ten percent. Bellingham Regulations for Single Family Inclusionary Housing allows new developments of nine units or less to not have an affordable component. All those units, when they're built at nine units or less, are a market rate. The recently reviewed one hundred and fifty-unit development in the overlay district across the street is being permitted without affordable housing requirement. This increased SHI percentage will benefit Bellingham for years to come.
So just one quick question. I guess this is for Jim, but, cause Jim, you mentioned this before, that I guess if it's, that there's a different criteria if it's apartments, cause, um, for a typical forty B, if it's houses, then the requirements are that, say, twenty-five percent are affordable.
Right.
With this, is that correct that all the two hundred and fifty units can count towards the affordability counts? Or is there?
So.
But there only want to be twenty-five percent are affordable? Yes, sorry.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so, um, an example, so the last forty B we just did was Sunken Meadow, uh, Burton Woods. So that was a single-family homeownership, uh, project. That was, I think, uh, Tom had forty, let's just say forty units, uh, which means ten of them would have been affordable, uh, thirty of them would have been market rate, but they're homeownership, um, units. So therefore, that ten percent, uh, will, once constructed, go, or once approved formally, it's, you know, once you get through litigation, all that, uh, will go on to our subsidized housing inventory. And so those ten units will count, uh, towards getting to that ten percent. Uh, the rental is a different animal. So the state. So the state a while back said, we want to support rental housing in the, in the Commonwealth. So what they did was say, kind of tweak the formula so that if you are doing rentals, not only the affordable, the 25% affordable, but the entire project will count as a subsidized, on your subsidized housing inventory. So going towards your 10%. So that's why, as Russ mentioned, he's counting the full 250 units, because it in fact would count as affordable on our subsidized housing inventory, meaning all those units that are market rate, all those units going for whatever they, you know, the, the market will, will allow for, counts to the town on the books as affordable and get us well beyond our 10%.
Okay, but, and then only, but they would still do, only 10% would be mixed throughout, would be affordable.
Only 25%, 25%, only 25% would be deemed affordable. But again, when, when we're talking affordable, maybe, maybe this would be a good time to just mention. So we're in, for any of the, the general public who might think about affordable and have different images in their head, you know, we're in the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy MSA, which means we're, we're lumped into all those communities in there. And the, the income that drives that is based on the, the surrounding areas as a whole, not just Bellingham. So, you know, so for instance, a family of four that wants to be eligible for something right now in Bellingham, if they're looking for one of those houses that we just approved there, you know, it's, it's almost, I believe it's $89,000 annually that they must make, or I'm sorry, can't exceed in order to purchase that home. And, and at the same time, they also have to be able to afford to live there. So they have to be able to procure a mortgage, for instance, for those homeownership, or they have to be able to afford the, the rents here at this location. So, you know, that's, that's what's affordable. I know there's a lot of mixed discussion about what affordable is, and then that's truly what we're talking about here.
Okay, yeah, thanks. You can keep going, sorry.
No, that's fine. That's great. School, school-aged children. We have a economic consultant that we used on a variety of projects. And Mark Forgé has done an analysis of school-aged children. There's, there's a couple of sources. There's the National Association of Home Builders. Mark actually went out, and when you look at the chart on the lower right, he talked to the school districts in, in the region, in Foxborough, Mansfield, Pembroke, in Franklin, he spoke with the school districts. In, in those particular projects, the Lodge, Hanover, West Village, and the Woods, he has actual school-aged children that are in those facilities, which is 29, 32, 41, and 49. And that is a percent of, that is a school, school-aged child per all the units. That is 0.116. Saracen Ashland is a community that Campinelli owns and designed and built. That is not a 40B, but it is an affordable complex that has 10% of its units as affordable. And that has 398 units, and there are 40 school-aged children there. And the Redbrook Apartments in Plymouth, Mass is also another Campinelli community. There, there has 184 units. And in that community, they currently have seven students, and that's right from our property management group. With this data, we've projected the Curtis at 250 units to have about 35 school-aged children. We have some other data that we can give you that the National Home Builders Association tracks nationally. And the trend is even a little less students than this when you break it up per bedroom. Here, as I was talking to you about the unit mix, we have 95 units that are one-bedroom, 31 units that are one-bedroom dens. So that gets us to 126 units that are one-bedrooms. Then you get into two bedrooms at 99, and then you get into a three-bedroom unit at 25. I can submit that data to the board from the National Builders Association, but, but I wanted to give you this data on the school children for now.
Okay, is that pretty much, could you just guide us there? Is that pretty much towards the end of your presentation? Do you have?
Almost there.
Okay, just to get a sense, yeah.
Sure. Tax analysis, the, the current tax receipts from the existing Mechanic Street properties adds up to a little over 36,000 per year. We've just done a tax projection based off the current tax rate at the Charles, and we prorated that unit over, over our unit here for an annual tax bill of $583,000 per year. So the tax revenue from this parcel would be over $550,000 higher than what parcels are yielding today. As Jim had mentioned, recent actions in December of 2019, the Bellingham Housing Plan identified this site as a preferred site for affordable housing. On January 6th of this year, we made a presentation to the Board of Selectmen in order to support our application to the state DHCD for a project eligibility application. The board voted 5-0 to endorse the project. On March 10th, we had a site walk and was conducted for all the Bellingham department heads and the DHCD. On April 7th, the project was presented at the Bellingham's monthly interdepartmental project meeting, where all the boards were in attendance via Zoom meeting. On May 20th, we received formal approval from DHCD under the local initiative program. And on June 5th, we received our certificate from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs with our environmental notification certificate. Previous projects, I'll just do this real quick. Campinelli's, this will be our fifth, excuse me, our sixth residential community we built in Norwood and Norton and Ashland and Plymouth. And we have a community being built in Adler, as we speak. We've done two 40Bs in Norwood and Norton. And as I said, Ashland and Plymouth are not 40Bs, but they're 10% and 5% affordable in each. Just some, I'm not even going to describe these photographs. This is just the quality of the communities that we've built that are very, as I described in the beginning, very pedestrian oriented and, and very outdoor room, living room amenities with swimming pools, fire pits, clubhouses, outdoor terraces, fitness centers, game rooms, country kitchens, and of course, the residents themselves. Those are just a little bit on the unit type. This is my closing slide. It's moving night on the comment at, at one of the units. So that concludes my presentation for now. As I said, there's several folks here that are available for questions, and of course, of course, I'm here as well.
Okay, yeah, thanks. No, I think that was a great overview.
So you want to, you want to end screen share real quick so we can see everyone?
Sure.
Perfect.
So I guess at this point, Jim, aside from, with the comments, the first steps would be to initiate a peer review? Would that be kind of the initial steps?
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously lessons learned, you know, having a robust conversation from the previous project. One of the big things was, you know, there wasn't much peer review. Obviously, that was, you know, a decade ago now at this point. But all of our projects that we do and what we did at the last 40B, as well as with the planning board and with conservation, we like to have a robust peer review of mostly the drainage. You know, that's, that's going to be critical. It's a critical all across town. And then also, we like to take a look, a closer look at traffic. You know, I, I can certainly look at zoning and those sort of things. But stormwater and traffic, I think, would be a proper peer review to do. And I, you know, I've, I've already discussed it with our pre-qualified engineers. So if the board wants, I can, I can go ahead and get them rolling on that.
Yeah, I think, I think to me for the site, my biggest concern, I guess, would be, yeah, stormwater, but traffic. Because I know for me, like the Westerly along that road definitely contributed to a lot of traffic back at Maple Street in that intersection. So that would probably be one of my biggest concerns, is what kind of impacts it's going to have to the traffic on Mechanic Street, but.
Great. And so, yeah, so I can certainly initiate that. And I think, you know, right now, I think the next steps would be simply, you know, if the board has any early comments from what they saw during the presentation and the package, you know, obviously getting any input from Butters this evening. And then we can get rolling in between this meeting and our next meeting to really hash out some of those engineering fine points.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I've actually got just very too quick ones. They've generalized. One is, I'd like to know the difference between the limited income, limited income apartments and the market apartments. Now, moving to doing homes that can, you know, do things a little differently, I'd like to know what the difference is going to be. And the very end of the presentation that I read through, they're looking to be permitted by 10:01. It was according to their schedule, which I thought that was kind of aggressive.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that sounds pretty quick to me.
It's, it's, that's right. If you read through the entire book, the big thick book, it's one of the last few pages of their timelines was to be permitted by 10:01. He's structured by 11:01 of 2020.
Okay, can, can the applicant speak to, I guess, the first question about the units? What the differences will be as far as?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, sure, we can speak to that. I can tell you that there'd be no difference. The state statutes require no difference between any unit. So for example, we build every unit, every corridor, every door, every garage absolutely equal. I could be renting as a market rate individual room or unit 201 one year. And when I leave, if the affordable component is below the 25% that the property manager and the owner are required to lease that unit to an affordable person. So the affordable units are not designated, and they need to be completely equal and distributed across the facility completely. So lighting, plumbing fixtures, kitchen, appliances, closets, they're all exactly the same.
Thank you. And actually, it brings up, you actually brought up another question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. I know Campinelli is building this project. Who will be the, the only entity? Will Campinelli continue to own this app that's built and being branched out?
Campinelli Clock Bellingham LLC is, is the owner entity.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions then from other board members?
I may, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that in the stormwater management section, I don't know if you, you said this before, but the existing culvert appears to be undersized and an upgrade to improve the existing deficiency is proposed with this project. Can you expand on that?
I can speak to that. Our original design had analyzed that culvert, because as I had mentioned, everything is currently going there now. And even under existing conditions, it is well undersized. But we still were proposing to reduce volume and rate to it. It still would require, if we had touched it, to upgrade it. We had looked into that Charles River watershed through the Meepa process, had some concerns about us sending more stormwater to it, or any stormwater to it, frankly. And we looked at the whole overall project and decided to take a different approach in that we wanted to keep everything on site now. I have not gone back to reanalyze that culvert and see now with what the contribute area would be that's off of our project and our site. But I would guess that that problem, if not gone away completely, is definitely significantly reduced because we just took our whole 15 acres out of the contributing area.
Right, thank you for answering that question.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
All right, if I could, I would be interested in seeing what the elevation of the apartment buildings would look like from the street. I understand that the property, I think you go up and then you go down. Four stories. Seems like it has the potential to be slightly out of place. And I know that you were mindful of that in designing it. But I would be curious to see what that might look like, maybe a rendering or something for next meeting, just to see what that looks like from the street. I think that would be helpful.
It would be very helpful.
Sure, we can do that. I, I don't have any opposition to that. What I can tell you, just prior to preparing a rendering, the closest, there's one building that comes close to the street, and it resides anywhere from 120 to 130. It's slightly kinked from the road. So it's north of 130 feet away from the road. And in there, we have a fairly decent landscape buffer, which we propose to put decent scale trees. But we'll, we'll provide that view for you. The remainder of the buildings are substantially further back from the road, as you can see on the site.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I think that brings me to my next point is that our, historically, our board is really concerned with buffering and hiding certain elements and trying to be mindful. There's a large community that abuts this development. So I think that's something that we'll be very cognizant of. And also, the traffic impact, in terms of the impact to the center of town and coming from that direction, it's a, it's a heavily traversed area, particularly at rush hour times, particularly in the morning, people going to school and going to the train station 495. So if we can make sure that we look at that and, Jim, just a couple of questions for you. The census is coming or will be conducted shortly. Well, that is the 10% of moving target? Are we firmly within the 10% with this, even if Sunken Meadow doesn't come aboard?
Yep. So, so yes, it is a move, it is a moving target in terms of that 10% will adjust. And I think that's why it is important to consider that 12% that they're, they're stating there. Because we will very likely move from that 8.7 for, if, you know, before this project, we're, we're likely to move from that 8.7 down, down a percentage or two if, when the census comes out. And that's because of the housing stock that gets developed over the years, over this past 10 years. There's several homes that have come in that don't have an affordable component to it. You know, those that were built five, six, seven units, single families, subdivisions, those sort of things. You know, those keep getting added and added. And then in 20, the 2020 census, they, they formally put them on. So, so we certainly want to be at 10% and then, and have a little bit of cushion.
All right. And then in terms of that light from the other warehouse facility that's being constructed, does the, does this project put us to the level? Do you believe with the state where the light could be installed? Or do we still need the other residential development to come online?
Yeah, so that's, that is definitely an ongoing dialogue. Russ, I don't, or Jesse maybe, or actually Ron's, I think, on too, right? I don't know if you've had any updates with the district on that?
Yeah, no, no updates on the district. I know VHB is working on the plans. And in talking with VHB, they're actually allowed to move forward with construction of the improvements before they're actually entirely completed with the plan review. They're doing that at their own risk, but I think they're doing that in order to move that project along. The installation of a traffic signal, in response to your question, Brian, is dependent on meeting certain minimum volume requirements. And those volume requirements are not only based on how much traffic is on Route 140, but also how much traffic is on the side streets. The Lincoln Properties development will generate, in, in combination with the residential component by Lowes Building Corporation, will generate a lot more traffic than the Curtis project will generate on the other side of the street. And it's, the volume warrants are not the combination of those two, but it's the higher of the two. So the Curtis project would never reach the level of traffic where it would warrant traffic signal. So the sum and substance of what I'm saying is that you want more traffic on the north side of the road in order to meet those warrants.
We, we were told when the, when the development was coming in for the warehouse facility, that it was a combination of all, all three of these developments coming together would likely trigger a light at that.
That's, well, that's not correct. When you look at the, when you look at the volume warrants for the installation of a signal, it is the two-way volume. It is the two way volume on the main street. Compared with the higher volume of the two side streets. Now, we've located our driveway. Directly across the street because it makes sense, especially if a signal is put in there in the future. It makes sense to incorporate that driveway into that signal operation and we're going to be. Making several improvements to make sure that that can happen and that we don't stand in the way of that signal going in. Such as installing the underground conduit necessary for future signalization. To make sure that we don't preclude that signal from going in, but I can tell you that the Curtis apartment project would never be the driving force behind meeting those signal warrants.
So how big is that development that's proposed across the street then for residentially and how many?
So so that's that's before the planning board now it's it's they haven't refined that just yet. It's it's likely in the neighborhood of one fifty to one seventy. But again, the planning board has a long way to go on on that one for certain.
Okay, any other comments then from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just two really quick. If we can get Brian Salisbury to quiet his crickets down next meeting, it'd be nice.
Really?
And I'm not sure that anyone can speak to this or not, but that one seventy seven or one seventy nine. You mentioned future development in there. It would have been nice to see, I gotta be honest with you, to see a whole thing taken to this. Is there any indication of what future development might look like there? Or can you not speak to that at this point?
That's not part of this venture.
Okay.
So we we really don't have any comment on that.
And Peter, so, you know, I'm looking at those two sites. I mean, they're business zoned. I know we did a corridor study there and we looked at full build out to what it might look like there. So. You know, there could be any number of things, but, you know, the business zone uses, you know, pad sites up up front there very likely.
I just, you know, I look at this project and it's definitely going to be an improvement on that area. It's it's gonna look so much nicer and. I'm I'm pushing a little bit of like the whole thing looking, but.
Yeah, no, that's a fair question. What I can tell you that in the slide that's in the package, we have. Planned, it was a right of way that TMC Holdings owns today. Which we are swapping. So TMC will now get instead of two smaller pad sites, they'll have a larger contiguous pad site. So it's not part of this development, but it will be transformed over time by either TMC or another entity, but we've prepped it for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other comment from any board members or? Okay, yeah, I think at this point. I'd like to open it up to the audience and thank you for your patience because it's definitely been a long meeting. So anyone out there that if you could just say your name and your address. Let us know if you have any comments.
Brian, I think we do have one comment from Susan. Susan, I don't know if you want to be unmuted or I could easily just read your question here. Either way.
Um, you can read my question. It's fine.
Okay, so the question is, is traffic going to be analyzed on the affected area of Maplebrook Road as people will try to avoid mechanic street? So. Maplebrook has kind of a winding road that goes from South Maple and it connects over to another main road there. So I don't know if that was looked at, Ron.
No, we did not look at the potential impacts to Maplebrook Road. Because when you look at it, yes, it does connect, obviously. Blackstone Street and South Maple Street through a series of winding residential neighborhood. But when you look at. The overall, you know, how how. Circuits of a route you would have to travel to avoid this section of Route one forty. I think you're gonna find that it's much quicker to stay on Route one forty rather than to travel through the neighborhood even with a new signal installed at this location.
Except enough people right now already travel through Maplebrook just to avoid the current. Mechanic Street as well, and it is a technically a private road. With speed bombs and speed tables because people speed so fast to get through it.
But is that because of people are traveling from, say, the town center area? And then with a destination to the south on South Maple Street?
I'm not sure. They just travel through and very quickly.
Right.
Ron, if I think. What might be happening, and I have no idea, but what I that particular stretch in the morning, particularly from what I've observed. Is very congested, one forty from the high school and then down one forty itself is very, very. Heavily traveled in the morning and maybe people are. Circumventing that to get onto South Maple so they can take a right back onto one forty to get onto four ninety five. That might be. A path that they they might be taking just to avoid that intersection altogether. So it it might be worthwhile. To look at that because I can see a savvy person learning how to do that to avoid the traffic on one forty.
All it takes is ways.
Right. Now I will take a look into that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments then from the public?
Oh, yeah, I see Lisa there.
Yes. Lisa Hunt, three three zero six Maplebrook Road. I would like to ask how far the carport section at the back. Is going to come up towards the tree line. Because. I'm one of the last houses that is going to be next to the tree section, to the carport section. And that is one of the last portions of privacy between. The. Houses and the new developments. Will you be taking down? Will you honor the tree line section as a privacy line or not?
Susan, just, sorry, go ahead.
Susan, this is Russell. Is it okay if I answer this question, Jim?
Lisa.
Oh, Lisa, sorry, sorry. Susan was previously. I apologize to that. Jim, is it okay if I answer this question through the board?
Brian?
Yeah, yeah, go go ahead.
Okay, great. Lisa, we would have liked to have had a pre hearing meeting with the immediate butters, but given the current. Covid and the governor's recommendations, we haven't had an opportunity to do that. What I would like to do, and I've mentioned this to Jim. Is subsequent to this meeting, we would like to meet you out at the site and try to go over these things live. It's difficult to go over them on a plan. But we can meet out there. We've met, we typically have neighborhood meetings with all of our developments and I. Absolutely want to do that with this development. And what we've often done is we've. Embraced the buffer and we've created a better buffer. And oftentimes we've put not only vegetation on our sites, but we've put it on our butters sites with their permission. So I'm confident that we, I don't know exactly what vegetation. Gets removed and what doesn't and where that vegetation is offhand relative to the property line. But we can put some flags up. We can walk the line with you and we can talk about. Standing in different positions on your lot and what you would and wouldn't see.
How can we schedule that?
I would like to do it prior to the next meeting. Obviously, this, I could probably go through Jim and schedule something. I need to check my schedule, but I feel I'm around the next two or three weeks.
Yeah, Lisa, why don't you reach out to to me and and maybe just through via email if that's okay with, you know, maybe. Some, or actually just reach out to me via email to say hi and then I'll connect the two of you so we can we can set up a time.
Okay, that can be done. All right.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Um, I actually have a another question. This was tangentially brought up before. With regards to traffic. And I'm not sure if I'm addressing you, Russell, or if I'm addressing the board. With regards to traffic. You mentioned that. That Mechanic Street is full in commute times. I have lived here for close on to thirty years. And have seen it grow from a trickle at commute times to. Full for two hours during commute times. And with the. Charles and the Westerly and other. Developments that have grown in. And I'm certain that with the Lincoln project and this project being granted, everybody says. The railhead is going to be an advantage. The Westerly. With the addition of the Westerly, it is already impossible to park. If you want to take any train past the seven o'clock. And that includes going around and parking on the other side, the far side, the Franklin side. Is there? Any discussion? With Franklin. About enlarging the parking lot?
Ron, do you want to respond to that from the traffic perspective?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there are any discussions between Bellingham and Franklin on increasing parking capacity at Forge Park. But we have reached out to GATRA. The local bus service, they do run two bus routes along Route one forty. And they don't currently have a stop anywhere near there. The closest stop on one of the routes is on Blackstone Street near Maplebrook. Which is quite a long distance to walk from this site. So we are talking with them about adding a bus stop. Near the site, hopefully right next to the site, ideally actually to go through the site if they would do that. But again. We are in discussions. We haven't heard back from them if that is something that they would consider, and that certainly would help in reducing the parking demand at Forge Park.
Yep.
And and Lisa, to to your point about it being full, we make that same argument to to the transportation, they're called CTPS. In Boston who comes out and and reviews these different stations with the communities and we always make the argument that. Just as you said, it's it's almost near capacity every time on the weekdays at certain times. So we would love to see it expanded some.
Yep, okay. It's worth asking. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other people in the audience with any other comments?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, so I guess, Jim. So I guess I'll just open it up to the board, I guess, at the board. Are there any other comments from any board members?
If I may. I would just like to see the study for the traffic. I I don't know if it was included in the package. I don't I did not notice it. It would be nice. To see the volumes and the wait times. Expected at least wait times. That would be great by next meeting, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and actually I'm going to direct it to Jim. Any indication whether we're going to go back to a live meeting? There's a lot involved in this particular project and doing it over Zoom may be a little difficult.
Yeah, so you bring up a good point here. So the goal is to actually be live in August. As you guys probably know, phase three happens Monday, which. Doesn't mean a whole lot in terms of public meetings, but but well, I'm meeting with the town administrator Tuesday morning to see how we can practically do it. Whether that that might actually mean we're going to the high school for the summer. But I'm looking, I'm working through the the practical aspects of that and hope to get to you some you guys something at the end of the week. In the meantime, while we are virtual, I was gonna ask the board if you guys are comfortable with perhaps doing something like an open house. Where once a week rotate through the board and a board member myself is at town hall with the plan set. And we welcome, you know, the general public to be able to come take a look one at a time, ask any questions, kind of like what we had tonight, but with. You know, the hard plan set in hand so we could scale off, you know, distances and those sort of things and 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 get the give the the general public an opportunity. If you guys are willing, I can definitely work on scheduling that early next week. Don't everyone rush at once, okay?
I'm open to it. I mean, I think it. I guess it's it's definitely a good idea. I guess. It's hard right now during these times, but I think. I think it'll be, I I think.
Excellent. And then one other thing about, you know, onsite, I don't know if the board wants to do a site walk between now and the next meeting. I could definitely schedule one, walk site, maybe have me, Jesse or Russ out there.
I would like that, Jim. That's always.
Would be a terrible idea.
Okay, and then Jim, I guess. Then you'll follow up as far as. Initiating kind of peer review?
Yes, I'll go ahead and get that rolling right now. So you guys will have that in hand before your next meeting so you can see. All the ins and outs of stormwater as well as traffic.
And then I guess the only other items then were, so Russell's gonna get the perspective images for the building to see that. Were there any other items being asked of the applicant on for the next meeting?
No. I'm sorry, you go ahead first, Jim.
Yeah, so what I what I have, I actually had a couple of quick things before before we go. So a lot of different things about the buffer in the back. I heard a couple of board members, a couple of the general public. You know, that I think we definitely need some dimensions on the plan set about how far you're away from from neighbors. In terms of area disturbance, making that line of area disturbance very clear. So we know once if this got approved. You know, Jesse and I can go out there and tape off exactly where that area disturbance is so that when you you go, well, typically when you go into clear cut, but this this is all disturbed anyway, so. That wouldn't matter, but taping it off so, you know, the the contractors don't go any further than that. So we give the butters a little bit of peace of mind that they're not going any further and encroaching into their towards their property. As well as, you know, looking at the garages in the back and kind of playing with that so that headlights aren't pointed towards the abutting properties. I saw there's a lot of open parking that's kind of if their headlights are on might, you know, you do got some woods there, but still if there's an opportunity to kind of minimize that, that would be great. Water pressure. Pressure tests. I don't know if you guys have done and analyzed that yet or if you worked with DPW on getting that. Completed, but I think with a four story building, that's, you know, that's something critical you want to get out in front of if it's not already done. And then pretty much, and yeah, and then the the renderings for height, I think, were the only other things I had there.
And then, well, I guess Rayon said about the traffic analysis.
Oh, yes, and and further traffic analysis.
So Jim, on the traffic. You have several copies of the report that we did and you also have an electronic copy. We're happy to submit another copy. For Rayon if you'd like us to do that, or do you have any extra copies that you could give him?
No, it's it's in the package. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of information there. But I don't know if Ron's looking at it any further in terms of neighboring locations, any any other points that the board may have had.
I guess the Maplebrook, right?
Right.
Have Ron look into that.
Yeah, I'll look into that outside of the traffic study, if you will. I'm not revising the traffic study, but I'll I'll provide you with some information at the next meeting then.
Okay, great.
Jim, Mr. Chairman, I just probably wait for another meeting, but. One of the waivers kind of confused me, the two forty dash sixty one. Can that be explained to me? It pertains to a centerline distance of eighty eighty feet to look for waiver for. What are they asking for?
Jesse, you want to take that one?
Was he muted? I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. I was just trying to find that one quickly on my waiver list to see what it's in reference to.
It's a reference to a centerline of eighty feet.
I was. Centerline radius. So the centerline radius for roadway design, if you will. So if you look at a twenty four foot road and you offset into the middle. So if you look at a 24-foot road and you offset into the middle 12 feet and you want to take a corner, that radius of the, the center 12-foot mark, they're saying that radius should not be less than 80 feet typically for taking a corner. And that, that's a design guideline that's often put in place to try to control speed. And we had to do that a little bit tighter for our main entrance coming in because of the sensitive resourcer with Curtis Pond, having the 25-foot no disturb. As soon as we come into the project, we had to take a hard left and get away from that and try not to impact that more. It's fine because of the speeds that we're gonna have in this type of project. So we still feel very comfortable with the design as it is, but we just do need relief from your local requirement.
Okay, and I understand that. Has the fire department shined down on that one yet?
Yeah, they've, they've, they've reviewed the turning radius of it and they were comfortable with that, the, the turning radius that was provided in the plan sets. Yeah, but they, they still, the fire department still does need to provide us, offer us comments for things like hydrants and fire lanes though.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I guess, do we have any other further comments or do we, someone want to make a motion?
Jim, when should we continue to, do you think?
Well, the crickets are allowed, you're right, I guess. I think August 6th is, is more than appropriate. I'll have the peer review going pretty, pretty quickly here. And it's the stormwater and traffic are the two big things that in the, in the next month, the two engineers can toss back and forth and we should have a document ready for you guys to review at the next meeting. Yeah, in the meantime, I'll schedule a sidewalk.
Or I'll move to continue the hearing until August 6th.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
All those opposed? Okay, I guess we'll see you again, Russell, August 6th. And again, thanks to all the neighbors for their patience because it's definitely been a long meeting.
Well, thank you, Brian. We look forward to meeting accordingly between now and the 6th and then we'll meet with the larger board on the 6th.
All right, thanks.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Yeah, I guess we move into general business.
I think minutes can wait until next time.
I'll second that.
That could beat me to it.
Okay, so should we address the board reorganization?
How about next time? I haven't had anything to eat, I'm hungry.
I ain't during the meeting myself.
It's 10 o'clock.
Does that mean that I chair for what, at least one last one before I get swapped up again?
Can I just, can I just nominate Brian for chair next year as well?
I'll second that one.
You don't want to do it, Artie?
No. It's Brian's, Brian's does it, needs to do it for another year.
And Brian's done excellent jobs this past year too, Brian.
What me? What are you, this, it sounds like the John O'Neal watch, what it sounds like. And I, well, actually, I'm gonna be away next meeting, August 6th, because I'm in Winnipeg.
We have another Brian, so we're all set.
Okay, as long as there's one, one Brian on board.
I'll go, I'll grow a beard. I need a ponytail too.
There you go. So again, I nominate Brian, Brian Wright for chair.
And I'll second that nomination.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Give me a vice?
Makes it easy.
I need a vice chair too.
Oh, who wants to be up for vice chair?
Do you want to do that?
Who?
You?
I was gonna nominate Peter Gabriel.
Peter, you want to do it?
I'll take it.
You guys shave the goatee. I'm not voting, I'm let you shave the goatee.
I'm not shaving till we have stop wearing a mask.
You gotta leave the mustache though.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great.
I can't be opposed.
Yourself. One, one vote will deny it though.
All right, great, yeah, everyone have a good fourth and, yeah, Jim, thanks for all your help with Lakeview Estates and you guys are definitely doing a good job keeping on top of that one, so.
All right, I'm Moosh Dujan.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Happy fourth, everybody.
Yeah, have a good fourth.
You as well.
Good night.
See you later.